So I would like to call to order the meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional. School District School Committee meeting on October twenty first at six oh five P M. Uh, we will start off as we normally do with any public comments. If you are. You've joined us online and you have a public comment. Please put your name and address into the chat and we will. Get to you. Is there any? Outlook in person, okay? So we'll wait.
Getting bratted out left and right.
Are you doing this before?
Hoping it gets better like.
Um, so we'll just wait a moment if there is anyone, people do we have on?
What's that just? Around this page, anywhere's aged.
So not seeing any public comment for tonight, we will move on to hours thirty four, right?
I'll purpose this again with, we still have not met as hard little group. So this is still just me, but I've also been chatting with um our principal, Mr. Roy and. Getting a good read from her. So this is me and a little her, but mostly, uh, okay. Last week was Spirit Week. That was pretty fun. We had some really great participation. Um.
Sophomores won.
Yes, the sophomores. My God, I was mad about it. That's okay. The sophomores won the Spirit Week trophy, but thankfully the seniors did win the boosters um their. Five hundred dollar donation for attending the different sporting events throughout the week. So that's great for them. Um, P S E Ts happened today, which was a little nerve wracking, but fun. So we did that. Um, and we have some really cool stuff coming up. We have band chorus and music and everything going to visit the elementary schools on Thursday, which is always a hit. And I was also informed that Mr. Malady's nine eleven class is having a presenter zooming in who was the first responder. On the day of, so that's pretty awesome. Um, the end of the quarter is coming up, so everyone's a little. Jam packed and stressed with different exams and things coming up, assessments and such like. But beyond that, again, everyone is still pretty just focused on. School, we're in the groove of things. Um, and so beyond that, there's not much else to report. So again, if you guys have any questions, let me know and yeah.
Any questions? Um, I don't have anything major to report for chairman's report, uh. For all in general terms to a few years and. Conducting business. Thank you, you know, for everyone that has been coming in to provide updates and curriculum updates. Appreciate that. Well, like we are going to be hearing about special education, which is. Great and always critical. Um, so we can move on from that to our consent agenda and. Just make sure I get it right. Okay. Uh, so I will make a motion to accept uh cons payable vouchers ten eighteen through ten twenty one. Uh payroll from October ninth twenty twenty five and then also the minutes from our previous meeting on October seventh. Do this. Any discussion?
I was seconded.
Sorry, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Uh, next, we have an out of state travel request. So how do you want to? You got the well to discuss that or is it just?
No, I mean, I think the concept is because of the consent agenda, it should just be routine and less some late ask questions.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to uh approve the out of state travel.
For the part of the consent agenda or not? It is, but.
Yes.
Do you want to give something? It's up to you guys.
Well, we are separate.
You can take a boat on. It's all right. I don't have anything else to do tonight. Third my evening.
So.
Can we actually say what the out of state travel is for the district area?
Nine eleven.
Yes.
Nine eleven classes going on a date for two years.
So I make a motion to out of state travel for New York City.
Six.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our subcommittee reports, uh. We pulled off for another couple of minutes. Uh, you want to start with finance committee? Kick, do you want to give a report? I'll be too.
Okay.
Since we have, uh, and there's actually. Something real quick that we want to just get. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so we had a meeting yesterday, is that what it was?
Yesterday.
Um, Michelle gave us a quick update on um F Y twenty six and of uh the fact that she will have the first quarter. Report for us at the beginning of November. As well as the F Y twenty five closeout um overview or documents there. Um, she is in the process of uh calculating and submitting E N D to D O R in the next several weeks. We don't have that by uh November fourth, but uh it should be submitted by then. Expectation of around three hundred thousand dollars um in E N D from from last year. As as just carrying some as a rough estimate. Um, which which would put our reserves at just over one million dollars for becoming. Um, but details about that to to uh sort of, but it was helpful to have that scale. In the test. Um, the F Y twenty six audit is underway. We are using C biz as we talked about last time. Uh, Michelle has gotten quotes for uh from three others uh for to change these companies for future years. Um, she will be bringing that to us soon. I don't think tonight, right? It's nothing. Um, and uh then we talked briefly about the budget calendar and the fact that. November eighteenth will be um the expected time where uh what Ann Michelle expect to bring. Kind of initial district assumption to the district members uh to our budget discussion. Um, and then the rest of our time was spent on talking about uh the agenda for. Uh, the number crunching joint meeting with the town representatives. And Pam Florida do a draft agenda uh that we came up with in that discussion um or our charge from. You all uh to the subcommittee, uh we are to bring up uh agenda for your review here. Uh, so it has several different pieces. Uh, one and and we can talk about this uh as well in just a moment, but. One is the opportunity to weigh in on the statewide A twelve uh school finance formula. And whether or not um we want to do something with the towns in regards to that. Uh, so we can talk about whether or not we want to do that ourselves as well in just a moment. Um, second, looking forward to the F Y twenty seven budget. Um, we are asking, we are expecting us and we are asking the towns to provide a broad overview of the major budget factors. Not, nobody's likely to have actual numbers at any point, but you know, where they expect the the big things to be. Uh, tending to such as, we all know, healthcare reserves, that kind of thing. Um, we have not had a chance to debrief with them around the Desi Connor report, so that is on there. Um, takeaways and open questions. And then uh the last two, we want to, we would also want to highlight informationally that this uh uh presentation about special education. Uh, will be, you know, available for recordings and we um know that's been a. A topic that they always has questions about, so we expect to um have some details tonight that that they could learn from. If they're willing to uh view that. Uh, and we can always have open to a following up with them afterwards. And then obviously looking ahead to in that kind of next night, you can just schedule it. Questions, comments? Concerns?
Chance to hear real quick.
I guess it's great. I I like the process of how you guys go through it. See what it is, but. Put your input here. My only, and it's not even a concern, it's just a curiosity, a hopefulness, is that when you say. We're bringing very high level budget numbers to the table with both our town partners do as well, because that's where we got uh we were jammed up. The last round with this in the spring uh or last year at some point, but um I think that this is clear and. I'm in here.
I think, uh, you know, I'm not sure we're going to have specific numbers. I think it's going to be more generalized issues.
Yep.
You know? In terms of why? Who I resolve.
Do you want input about the the? The um school finance formula stuff right now?
Um, not for this, not for, let's get this done first, then.
Okay.
So one question on the agenda is, is there a particular prioritization which was in the order?
Um, I. We drafted this in in an order that we expect, you know, to have a flow, but you know, it's gonna shift a little bit, but. Um, that'll be good to start with the statewide look first, some we might have in common to help with settle a lot of context.
And then, I just wanted to understand the thought.
Yeah.
Behind the work, so that's the budget.
That's so clearly why we're there, right? So uh and then the audit report is been ongoing conversation. About what? What Essex in particular has been looking for uh and and to what extent that. Speaks to their their questions and what what remains open. And we want to be able to share our takeaways from other key key least during the session.
Having attended previous meetings on some of these topics, um, I wonder, I'm wondering aloud for the committee to consider. Pulling the audit report um. Up under the statewide school finance, like if we're talking about. Framing it in its conversation first statewide. It would make sense to move that report and the results of that report up a bit before the. Look forward conversation. The answer is no, that's fine.
We can certainly consider it. Um, I do think that the audit report is about us specifically rather than the state, so.
The state conducted the report, right?
Yeah, but it but two very different.
Yeah, I just think the results of that report are really from a state level. From a state auditor are helpful in framing the later conversation.
Okay.
I think we'll take like a straw poll. Seems like everyone will get up.
We can vote, right?
We can vote.
If you need a vote to.
I don't know if we need a vote.
Thought that's what we had put in the.
Sure.
I just.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for our next. Uh, numbers portion meetings.
Has amended by this day or?
She's not amending the topics at all.
Yeah, this is a suggestion for maybe. The committee to weigh in on if they, this committee way and then for them to consider and they will go to the meeting, obviously. Appreciate you guys taking on this meeting. Appreciate the town partners coming to the table and I love. I think it's important that we have this open dialogue, so thank you, you know, if extra time.
Second.
Any discussion?
Or change.
All those in favor?
Should, yes.
I see none of us. Thank you.
Open collaboration. That could work.
Okay, so uh the last thing um that um. We've already talked about in in the context of the. Joint town meeting, but we we should talk about ourselves, given that it's coming up starting later this week. Um, but blasting through the uh basically the next month. Um, the state is holding public hearings to review basically chapter seventy. Um, the the A twelve school finance rundown. Um. You know, we get about what eleven percent of our budget is uh chapter seventy. Um, so it is an important factor for us. Uh, it is. You know, we have not been the beneficiaries of the last student achievement. Uh, tweak to that to that work. Um. Uh, but you know, if we have something to say as a committee, we we should pull that together. Relatively soon because we have basically a month this. Now, they are holding in-person sessions, you know, anybody can can speak there, but if we want to say something as a school committee. Um, we'll we'll need to draft that and and all together and agree on it and probably submit it to break. Um, so I just wanted to put that on the table because it is important moment. This does not happen often. Um, will probably not happen again in our times on on the school committee unless you plan to stay here next, you know, ten, twelve years, so. Um, so this is a, this is a moment to speak up if we we so choose.
Before our new members, do you guys are familiar with chapter seven? Any background?
Proudly I am. I don't have, like some, like the eleven percent is really helpful or some of the specific numbers. Relative to our yesterday.
They can have a little color?
I could add color. We can also put it on an upcoming agenda, a discussion, because I. Know what this says, but I was around for the last chapter seventies. Review panel and we did participate in that and I think. We we got some incremental relief in the funding, um. In the adjustments to the in phase of funding formula change around healthcare. Minor change around special education was one more and I can't remember what that is yet, but I think holistically. What we probably want to talk about is we're a district that doesn't truly benefit from chapter seventy. We benefited. As being held harmless, even though our enrollment's declined, but the big picture problem, the big picture glitch for us is that we're seen as a. High socioeconomic environment, so we're almost half in what we're going to get. Um, so I think what we've been pushing on. Through the superintendent's group is really looking at towns like ours that are so beholden to um individual. Real estate tax revenues to drive the budget that. Talking about that in a broader context, because one of the places that the last review didn't go was in the redistribution. They didn't tap touch the redistribution formula because that's a very difficult conversation to have. But that is what would get towns like all to do. So I think we could do, um, I think there's. Benefit in understanding the formula a little bit better, although I don't know that. Obvious to know it in and out. I'm sure you know it in and out and can project very well on it, but I think that so some of these hearings is look, they're looking for anecdotes about how it. And how much town resources we're having to expend more so than another community, how our tax rates. Are going up at a higher rate because of our need to sustain support.
And how maybe the impact might have other. Expect features the towns have, so that's something we'd touch upon.
What is the time for collecting?
Yes. They don't have an actual uh due date for submitting public comment, but they say through November. And the public sessions go basically uh to like the. Third week of November or something like that. I forget the exact date, the nineteenth, so we have about a month.
They may, they could possibly do more in spring. I I should be outside that more if I go to a meeting where I know this is.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Friday. I would be interested in doing like a little wish, a virtual lunch workshop or something, and that was of interest to others, but I also don't want to. Take us a bunch of time if I'm the only person who wants to.
Oh, without the.
Think that um. I'm in support of this. I'm also in support of the idea if um if you break this up at the the. I'm going to just start calling it open collaboration. Um. Of seeing what messages that our town partners would want to bring to the table if we did a joint message. Or or if we individually or however it ends up shaking out, I'm interested to hear what what their views are. I think there's value also, even if we don't end up with a lot of relief, um. I think there's value in a little bit more exposure for us. We, I came on to the committee at a time. Kind of the tail end of when we used to have state reps attend our budget. Meetings and we have representatives at the at the, you know, beyond our town local level. Um, engaging with us and we have not seen that in a number of years and um I think that. You know, we're here fighting the good fight as two towns in a district, but it's. Worth it to elevate that a little bit and to say, no, we are still here and we're not the only district like this. Um, we're not going to get a lot of sympathy tears for for our our budget, but um I I think there's value in bringing to the attention. Of people who have some stewardship for our towns. That this is something we care about, so they were really spoiling.
This was something that town partners might also want to contribute their feedback to.
That's that's why we put it on my agenda for uh next week. For the for the collaboration.
Wow.
Yeah. They say that the Department of Public Interest is specific suggestions for changes in the methodology for determining. Local contribution, but several have a but. I'm just waiting on the website, but they're saying it's very especially interesting and um. The impact of local fundraising requires municipalities' ability to maintain and fund the levels of municipal services. Such I think having others who's make more to that would be helpful.
I think a strong statement. Coming from as a united voice coming from each of the town partners and the school committee jointly to the state. Um. Articulating like what our challenges have been. Would be something that I would be willing to work on and. Would, you know, be something that more is based the needle because I do think. What they're looking for. Is very much related and and municipal finance as it relates to the school budget.
I would add, though, that this is also an opportunity where. We have two different towns and two different approaches to leadership in terms of the school budget, that it's an opportunity for. Our town leaders to advocate for. What that town needs, whether it's the same or whether it's different. Um, I'm not sure that it's such important to me that we. Put out a universal message as it is that people put out a message, right? Whatever. Whatever message, this is your chance to get it out.
But I think, yeah, but I love that the finance subcommittee is bringing this to the towns because it's on us as at now. So this is where at state level advocacy comes into play for us is with the members, so agreed, but also thank you again.
And only probably one small thing to keep in mind is that as a regional school district, we directly receive chapter seventy. It does not flow through the towns. But um it was small within town, like if so, it for Georgetown, chapter seventy goes right into the annual town revenue to be allocated back to us. So I anticipate they're going to be hearing a lot of feedback from. Where the schools and towns may be on different sides of the argument. Um, I know how colleagues who have a lot of stress over the fact that if chapter seventy goes up, their. Local allocation goes down, so I I think. More needing and collaborating with town partners for great. This could increase chapter seventy to us could provide another. Place to relieve some of the assessment.
The timing wise, that meeting's on the thirtieth.
Right.
Well, there's a whole series of public listening sessions.
I mean, the open.
Oh, oh, sorry. Yes, that's on the.
Thirty, if we find out then, then perhaps at our November fourth meeting, we could. Give back what the input there was, we ended, if it comes down, scheduling a lunch workshop type thing to work on.
Yep.
At this time.
Yep.
It's a virtual meeting from last week. Well, not the last one, but you have a great meeting. Most of the ones happening because I don't feel any compassion.
But it's unlikely for us to get a full statement. We only have three minutes in those one sessions. We can submit. Things written, timed, carried, definitely ones. That's probably.
That we have time.
Yeah, that's probably the estimate for us as an organization.
That's great.
Let's put, I mean, Andrew, is this something that's been on your radar at all or?
No. But if I make an interject. If we sit down in the meeting and you hand out the agenda on a decent day, we're not going to have any information for it.
Well, we're gonna, what, now that we have agreement that that this is the agenda, we'll forward it to everybody.
Good.
So. Next steps is to put this on. Hold the press agenda.
After after we know what how the town conversation goes. And I.
Your next meeting.
Yeah, I think our next meeting is probably appropriate time. And if it if it makes sense, I I've been starting some commentary of my own. Uh, and you know, I think if we have, if we have this lunch, you know, working session or whatever we can come up with. Uh, you know, we should have something drafted to to start from. On that next meeting and I'm happy to. Do that or work with, work with uh policy and advocacy. To do that.
Sure. Okay, uh, that's it for us, Richard, because it was.
That's it for us.
Yeah. So that's what I've already mentioned and. Next we'll go to the elementary facilities.
Yep.
Meeting and I'm not sure. Did John, John mention he was going to join? We both.
Hey Chris, I'm here.
Oh, okay. So you guys want to have her?
John, I didn't get a chance to check with you, John. Do you want to report out or do you want me to do it?
No, you're good because I was about, I had to drop off about an hour and a half into that meeting, so um or an hour or so into that meeting. So, yeah, if you don't mind, Teresa, thanks.
Uh, so since. Since we, since it's our last school committee meeting, um, first thing is that we had. Community meeting number one for um the building project the very next night, right after our last school committee meeting. Um, Christina Delangelo from Jordan Whittier, who was our own budget manager, and Jim LaPasta from J C J, who's our designers. And Pam did a really nice job presenting. Um, it had a strong turnout. Um, my count was at least forty people in the room that were not. Part of the S B C, part of the presenting team, or teachers, plus another eighteen to twenty more online. So that's an incredibly strong turnout, which yeah, it was really, it was a comfortably full elementary uh cafeteria. Um, it was a nice diverse group. There were people from both towns, um, and. Importantly, not a typical school turnout. It was a lot of people who will be participating actively in town meetings and so I was really pleased with that. Very thoughtful questions and comments. Um, next one will be on November twentieth, so that will be promoted equally. Uh, fervently, um, but we had a full uh S B C meeting on October fourteenth last week. We discussed and approved the invoices as been approved tonight. We had a um update um. On what the ed program and space summary review are uh doing. We discussed a little about what that means. The next visioning session is tomorrow. With second visioning session for ed programming. Um, but the bulk of our time was in the report out from the um site selection working group. We had a. A working group meeting to dive into the site selection process with the three sites. New consideration and if you recall, S B C had created a list of criteria, refined that list. And then had a working group meeting to really evaluate each of the three using those criteria uh more depth. And so the report out to the the full committee uh had a nice little red, yellow, green uh graphic with it to really give us a, an idea of. Where things stand as we understand them now from the site selection perspective, so. What we have learned is that um we are good, we are. Just about ready to remove Apple Street uh from consideration as a site. The best we'll see, they'll take a straw poll on that. It was unanimous uh based on what we've learned. The site um has a couple of good things going for it in that it's town owned, it's empty, flat, it's well sized for our needs. Uh, so the site itself wouldn't be terribly complex at first glance to build upon. Um, construction wouldn't impact daily experience of students, which is definitely a positive. But there are a lot of uh not so great app features and some unknowns. Um, so not so great would be safety concerns on Apple Street, just thriving Apple Street is difficult at best of times, so we have buses. Um, the walkability factor for Apple Street is um almost non-existent. There's not a lot of access to other community resources there. It's kind of a rural feel. Part of essence. Um, and very importantly, there would um, almost certainly require piece of urban infrastructure upgrades offsite. So widening the road to allow for safe travel, um, possible bridge reinforcements in the head of Apple Street. Possibly needing to um, upsize the water main that, that carries the water down Apple Street. Those would be town process, not part of the, the school project, project. And so um, the time factor there, additional um, votes for appropriations or funds. And critically, um, anything offsite for infrastructure is not ineligible. Possible M S B A reinforcement. So that would be all town money funded. So between the time, the cost, um, and frankly, the, the magnitude of that undertaking from what we've learned so far, it just doesn't appear that it would be um, wise for us to continue putting resources into evaluating this site when we have two other sites that um, that we have to continue um, moving forward with. And uh, kind of a final point on that is that nobody's advocating for this site right now either. Uh, there's nobody coming to us and saying, but this would be great, uh, really push this forward. And so um, with that, we did take, like I said, took a straw poll and we will take an actual vote on it at our next meeting, next Tuesday. Um, to officially remove that from consideration, which we do have the authority to do at this point. Um, the memorial site also had some um, pretty strong challenges come to light, but you can't remove it quite so quickly because it was part of the um, statement of interest for the M S B A application. And so we have to develop that a little bit further before we can um, evaluate whether to remove that or not. Um, in conjunction with the great configuration conversation. What are those strong challenges? Uh, can we pull out my humble, just high level? High level would be the site itself, would need to be, we got two memories of all of the people there, but we just did a building project there. So that's the biggest kind of piece of, just did a building project there. So it's now go and either reconfigure it or add on to create another project for that. I didn't go into my full list of all the memorial was because you will hear them.
Couple of down key ones are that there's um, a whole infrastructure underneath the parking lot that deals with water. So there's only one spot in addition could go and that would then reclaim the tenants courts off. So I think the long and the short of it is initially they've stated there's significant environmental challenges in the perimeter. It's already an overdeveloped site, so it's further overdeveloped it. And because of the new build, there's infrastructure being into the land that limits the location of things and that in itself would be challenging. So that's what they've cited so far.
See, that again, I mean.
Yeah, that's the, we, there was a significant expense to the environmental stipulations, building stipulations and work with the Bon Hub in Manchester, um, just to meet the needs of getting that building up. So I think they're anticipating some, this should stipulations for the project.
But I, they're wanting to keep going with it. Yeah, I don't want to derail right now because you will hear in great detail about the consideration of memorial, those musical, right now we're really just focused on, we are ready to pare down site seat, which is the Apple Street site uh, from consideration. And so um, I did standing in for Kate last night with the E S exporter selectmen, did report that out to them as well. So they know, um, and they know that if they have any strong reason to move that forward, that they have, if they have an opinion that they would like the S B C to consider before we take that vote, that they um, can email that in.
What's that?
Yes. But again, I, I, it seems like from what everyone's learned, it's, it's a pretty um, obvious next step. And uh, there you go. So then finally, um, we are looking potentially to add um, a couple of additional tours of the E S, hoping to coincide one of them with the open door food truck. Um, date one of these, you know, in an upcoming month, um, and with a specific invite through the senior center. And also to schedule a tour of memorial for families that want to better understand or individuals who want to better understand what we've already done. And I think that our next S B C meeting is the next Tuesday, the twenty eighth. We're on time and on budget.
Yep.
Anything to add, John?
No, I think that was a great summary. Thanks, Teresa, for doing that.
Thanks, John.
Uh, moving on to policy.
Yep. I think I'm making that report tonight. So um, policy and advocacy subcommittee met today. We um, very briefly discussed looking at fundraising policy in a future meeting. We're prepared to discuss it today. Um, but we all, we spent the majority of the meeting talking about the newsletter um, as part of trying to figure out the workflow there. And um, so be, because we, it's our first time through this newsletter and it's very much a first draft. Um, it took a significant portion of the meeting. Um, hopefully, I feel pretty confident that once we get the workflow in order, we get our systems down, that will become much more streamlined and take up much less of our meeting time. Um, but we do have a draft that I believe Pam emailed out earlier today. Um, the draft is organized by headings to identify kind of like through lines of things that we talk about from meeting to meeting. Um, I think sometimes even like as a school committee member, things can feel a little disjointed. We talked about this, then we move on to like fifteen other things. So this is um, an opportunity to kind of hone in on like, what is it that we're talking about? Simplify that for the community so that they can engage with it and stay abreast of what we're talking about. Um, it isn't super charismatic. It doesn't have a lot of personality. It is literally just a summary of our meeting minutes with live links, taking people directly to um, presentations and reports and documents that were shared during our meetings that are linked. They're, they're official documents from the district website that Pam has already posted. Um, let's see. Uh, this is the voice of this committee. That's why it's not that we don't all have our own special personalities, but that's why it's not, it doesn't read as maybe super dynamic if we want it to. That's feedback this committee can give if we want it to be more visual. Or we want visuals to accompany it. That's feedback that this is in my mind. Uh, at work, sometimes we use the phrasing, the first pancake. Test the griddle, test the batter consistency, see how it is. I think that this is kind of like a first draft, a first shot, and it's going to probably be something that we as a committee, um, that it can evolve um, to be what we really want it to be and what our communities would benefit from it being. Um, as we see who engaged with it, how often, and we'll be collecting feedback on how many people are engaging with it and how um, experimenting with all the different channels and distributing it that we talked about. But this is really just an, an opportunity for us to agree on the core, the core content and also the wording, really, like aren't we comfortable with the wording? Nadia helped a lot with the word smithing, um, and getting down to the nitty, the nitty gritty. So um, happy to take the feedback and edit. Did, do you want to project it Pam? Or like, how do you want to?
Yeah, I sure can.
Yeah, don't bother.
Do you have a chance to review it? Yeah.
Can I ask a question about uh, process, I guess? I thought, and I missed our last thing, it was online. Um, but from the motion that I had read ahead of time, I thought that the letter was not, that the, whatever we're calling this, that this communication was not coming from the policy communications.
It was coming from me. Um, and I wrote it. And then Pam, um, and I met, you met about it, right Pam?
Mm-hmm.
And we talked about workflow. And what she was most comfortable with was this being written by me. Um, and then the policy and advocacy subcommittee getting eyes on it so that when it got here and, and like uniting on whether we were for it or not, um, and comfortable with it or not. And then when it got here, that it would um, not, you know, take up too much of the bandwidth and then the meeting time of this committee, that it would be a pretty straightforward.
But, but to us, it is that, I mean, from us as a committee.
But do you feel like it is taking up bandwidth of, of the policy committee?
Certainly it is. And certainly, this one, I think more so than it ever will in the future. I think it will take less and less as we all have, and me, and we all get better and better at this. Um, fortunately today for our agenda, we didn't really have anything that um, got pushed off of the agenda in order to discuss this. You see eyebrows blowing up? So um, is that true Pam? Or?
I, I didn't prepare for the fundraising discussion today.
I didn't say, my eyes can make whatever face they want.
That would have been the topic.
Yeah.
Okay.
My eyes are allowed to make a face as long as my mouth is open.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking for confirmation. That was my impromptu. What's that?
I wasn't prepared to have that extensive conversation today.
And, and I agree with your assessment because we spent a lot of time just talking about the format, the deal. The approach, right, towards clean.
Definitely nail those things down.
Who is the target audience? Would you, because when I read this, which by the way, I really love the uh, embedded links. I feel like those are things that I'm constantly struggling to find. So having them all in one place and readily accessible and clear where they need is awesome. When I read this, it reads very similar to our minutes, but is missing what I think of as key parts of our meeting. And I'm wondering if we're going to be accused of selectively reporting out only things that we I, right, I, I guess I'm
We are amused that.
But here are, like,
we are reporting out the things that we want the community and need the community to be aware of if they're going to engage with us. So the things that, that are included in here, the wellness policy. Um, there's community members that are participating in that. And we want people to be aware that that work is going on. People could come and make a public comment about that if they want.
Right. No, I'm not arguing with any of that. It is included. I'm more concerned with things that aren't included and then us being accused of purposely not including things.
But I think we did add something at the top.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, the intent is not to repeat the minutes. Someone might as well release some minutes. And that's why upfront we say we want to hear everything that was discussed.
The meeting, the minutes are linked at the very top, the two dates and the bullet points are the live links to the actual minutes for those meetings. So the public is certainly entitled to read the minutes as much as they want, right? This is really just, as a school committee, our through lines for the last month. You know, we're thinking about these things. We're working on these things. This is what we're up to. If you want to engage with us, these are the ways that you do so. Um, so that it is simplified and it rises to the top of their consciousness or their feeds or their, you know, the million things that they have going on in any given week or day.
And given that, the only addition I would request is some something about upcoming events in, in our schools or exciting things happening in our schools.
Yeah, I think that would be a great part to add. Um, I don't ha, I didn't have a comprehensive list of like all the district wide upcoming activities. And there is a bit here where um, there's a district calendar. Is, so there is a district calendar, right Pam?
Right, but all, I mean, there's also the minutes. There's, right? It's all, it's, it's all there somewhere.
The question is, what do we, if we want to include that as a section, we absolutely can. Um, or we could say like for a list of upcoming events and make sure that the district calendar is live linked as part of this document. That's kind of a, you know, that's a great point to bring, you know, as far as feedback, a section that can easily be added. Just, just how much, how in depth.
Even just straight out of the principal newsletters that go out, like the middle schools, this coming out, elementary, so that's high school has this.
Yeah. So like anything, like writing this, it was kind of hard because it's, it's like how, how fil, we're filtering, right? Like what's the filter and how broad is the filter? How micro do we want to go? So do we want in our school committee newsletter every day for every single school for the next three months? Or do we want simply school committee upcoming events? Do we want like, like some fundraising events to go on there, like Night of Stars is coming up? Um, so that, I don't know.
We're allowed to do that. Well, we struggle, we struggle with this too, right? Because we have staff newsletters, we have schools, then we have the district. And the district tries to hit the district level activities and the schools hit the school based activities. Um, we do put in notices for our, I'll call them in general boosters and E G O groups. Um, it can be difficult because everyone wants to piece in social media and it's hard sometimes to, you know, make decisions between people who are uh, a for-profit versus our live, our local libraries are trying to get. So we pretty much stick to local, um, local civic organizations and our boosters and that's about it. I don't, I don't know if the school committee newsletter will have a different set of rules. This is new territory. I, I will attest that keeping track of all of the events is not easy. Right. And I don't actually mean, I guess the purpose behind including, in my mind, the purpose behind including that section is not to invite people to those events because many times the general public isn't invited to those. It's just to help the general public to feel connected. And it, with our schools, a way that's a little bit more personal in a way that like they can picture what's going on in the schools.
Yeah.
Uh, which I think is really difficult to do and we don't have an avenue for doing it.
I mean, maybe we, in our newsletter, we include only events that the public is invited to attend.
I was going to say, that would be boring to Pam, maybe like if there is, I don't know, a special athletic event. If there's never been any problems, we can figure out. It's actually, not, not a physical game. It's just doing this thing.
Right, indeed. For performing arts weekend. But I do think it is great to get people who might not have kids in the district, who live in town, looking for something to do on a weekend, like get it on their radar to come to a performance or a sports game. Um,
And then
Even on your five, like not two months of it, right?
I would put out something that's going to be.
In the next non- fair stuff.
Yeah.
Um, what are we? What do you need for us tonight? I think, Pam? They need the okay to publish. And maybe a little bit of a discussion about what is the format that you want it published in, that you want to use. I guess my recommendation would be you use some tool that's purchased by the district or the student committee or an existing tool that we already have to be distributed. Do not use a personal Google account or fan account or whatever other tools might be out there. Um, so we currently have Smore parents where it's too limited. He won't be able to reach beyond. Um, beyond just direct school, school community with it. That's going to be Lord, if you're a little bit of thought. Which is there, but we figured out the distribution. So that's, but I think Smore right now is probably the best tool we have for it, even though it's not the fanciest.
It's more, it's, it will give you analytics. Is it a um, a blog? Like what is Smore? I've read stuff on Smore before, but I've never actually.
It's basically a blog.
Okay.
Looking constant contact.
And it lives online in a blog style format and people can click on it to access that post.
It distributes through email. They'll distribute a link, will post a link, and there's an auto post up to Facebook or Instagram.
It doesn't live on a website somewhere?
Yes.
Okay. And it live on our school committee website? And that's something we already pay. So I would propose that we, um, I, I think the first question is, do we need to add upcoming events or is that a note for next newsletter perhaps? Because this is something we're going to constantly refine and work on. So can this be approved as is for just this month? And then also, is Smore, given that it's already paying for it and its um, ability to track it or uh, track engagement and also um, publish an acceptable platform.
Yep, maybe this, I think it's great. We have to start somewhere. As well as stand out, this completely is. As efficiently as we can.
I'll stop for a second.
Yeah, I'll stop.
We need to vote on it, Pam?
Yeah, I think you should vote. On the format though, or.
On the newsletter. And distribute this.
As of spring now, then.
Feedback is welcome, like as as this rolls out, if you're hearing things in the community or you're not liking how it's rolling out, or you want to add a section. About events or whatever, the superintendent's copy is a great thing to add. Um.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. Um, if you want to add things, then like that, that's sort of like you can reach out to me and I will um. Take that into consideration as I try to improve draft, draft to draft to minimize the work of the policy and that because the subcommittee and. Basically, hopefully eventually rubber stamping these things.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve and publish the. School fitting newsletter as written. All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
So, um. I was trying to wrap my head around some, some. The way I'm thinking about this and looking back in the minutes from last time, it was. It was tasked with, we approved for Lindsay to take this on for the year. And so my, my thoughts that I just want to put forth, and we don't have to solve them right now, but maybe as we move forward, something that we should, that. That people could ponder and maybe we can discuss next time. Um. One is that. I hope that we, I don't think we need to wordsmith it after policy and communication subcommittee look. I I get that maybe we wanted to for the first one, but I I wasn't expecting that today. I, I mean, it said on there, like we had four things, it was the last one on there and. I don't think that's entirely necessary. Um. And I don't think it's the wisest use of our limited subcommittee time because I still think that it can be effective and. And come to the same outcome without doing that. But my, my second thought on that is, is that we, we did. Give this to a person who brought this forward to us by way of passion and enthusiasm for a specific kind of work. And while it's important, I agree that it is important that it be something that we all can get behind because it's coming from the school committee. I don't see anything wrong with it. Um. Not feeling quite so. Faint. And I don't see anything wrong with it, with it reading um in the way that. That Lindsay was the person who, with enthusiasm and passion, brought this forth with experience doing exactly this. Um. That some of that energy comes through and I think that it could still be something that we all get behind as support. And sound a little bit more like you came from her because the fact is it did. And we can approve a thing and agree to it. So I'm putting that out there as my opinion, that my hope if we are moving toward a refining and and and, you know, getting into a group. Is that it does show some personality because we have all of this information. We could put minutes into AI and we can say, give us a three sentence blurb on these six topics. We can do all of that. I think we're not making best use of the, the gifts and skills that we have, that we have delegated that. Job to a person to use if we, if we don't move that way. So that's just something for. Due for consideration, but that's where I am with this. I'm not trying to stop it from going forward. It's, I would just ask for support, I just.
Thank you, Teresa.
I would just ask for patience as it is a new thing. So it's gonna need to evolve into something that we all want.
The negotiations subcommittee did not meet, so we were.
I am just gonna tag on and say a couple of things for consideration around the newsletter or joint communications. It just because I did, I could realize it took time today and if it means we need to find additional time. I think there's value in having three people synthesize their voices. In attempting to represent a full body because as much as Lindsay is a fantastic communicator. Nothing from the committee should be in the voice of one individual, it should be in the committee's voice. So I think we need to search for that a little bit because this needs, you want, I would. Haven't you asked the question, how does this continue and sustain when you don't have one person running point on it? Or if the person running point on it isn't in agreement with the full body?
I would push back a little bit and say that that is not what we voted on. And so if it is going to be on the task that the policy committee is applying. More regular effort to, which may be fine, I don't know. But I would like to see a full picture of what the policy and communications committee is taking on this year and then sort of figure out how the time. Like, do we want to separate it out and have a communication subcommittee who does have the time to deal with this and separate out policy or however it goes?
That would be all for that. My sense is if not in subcommittee, it will end up happening here. And it will take considerable time.
From everybody.
And if you want to dedicate one portion of one meeting per month to that, that's fine. I just, I I think it will end up being time. I got this.
That was a great start to your superintendent.
Getting cheeky tonight, Chris. You know, we've got um a pretty big conversation on, conversation coming up about special education. So just a reminder, there is a coffee coming up this week. Um, if you have an RSVP, that doesn't matter, everybody is just welcome to come and join. If you have questions about the building project or any of the reports that we've done. Um, so far this fall, or if you just like to ask a question or meet other people in the district, please join us. Drink free.
Just real quick, does anyone from that school committee ever attend and would you?
Sure.
Like, could you be a mom or a girlfriend?
It doesn't have to be. You're welcome to join. Um, it's just an open forum for people to come and chat.
How many people on average come to it?
I would say last year, we filled out the conference room just about every meeting, so figure 10 around the table, somewhere between six and 10 people. We'll start, and this will be hard, you have a hard copy in front of you, um with some updated numbers. This is far too hard to read on the screen, but it's just there um for a point of. Information that this is kind of the new report we've added over the last few years. We're calling, we call it the um class size section report. And it's just an overview of um. How classes or sections are just seen here, they distributed. Throughout the skip. So there's a section for high school, middle school and the two elementary schools. Uh, we have talked a little bit about the elementary class size at a previous meeting. There really has been no change there. Um, you'll see that both schools are pretty much on a, in the same ballpark with the average class size with. Um, Memorial being a slightly larger school, uh also having the pre-K and um a couple. Up to third and fifth grade with an additional section above two to accommodate their large population. So I would say we always kind of look at the general average class size. We have some that are a little bit higher, some that are a little bit lower. Mostly are hitting right around benchmark with Essex's average class size at 17. And Memorial School average class size at 19 and that's excluding pre-K. Pre-K has its own. Um. Its own class size because they're capped at 15. So that is the um Essex and Memorial Schools side by side. The middle school, really no change since the previous report. Um, you're seeing that the majority of classes break quite nicely. So the middle school scheduling is basically each class six, seven and eight has five core contents and the kids are even. Are divided among those relatively smoothly. Um, in seventh grade, when we add the advanced math, that creates some um distribution imbalances. So you might have a little bit, a class with 28 and a class with 19. But basically that all averages out to. Uh, right around 18 students per class, with some up a little bit higher and a little bit lower. I think what was interesting this year was to see that now that we've aligned the schedules at the two levels. Both schools are now on a seven-day rotating draw. So that necessitates the additional number of sections. So underlying both the middle and high schools' schedule, as just a basic principle, is you need to fill. A schedule, seven periods. Over the, you know, a day for every student. So if we wanted to, say, you're capping your class sizes at 18 and just heterogeneously, meaning just dividing the kids equally. Among all of the classes, we would need a minimum of 144 full year sections to accommodate that. So when you look at um the middle school at 155, we have a few additional sections in there probably to accommodate some of those split levels, right? Because it's not all breaking evenly and you see that really play out. Um, at the high school in a whole bunch of different ways that we're still trying to to nail down and improve upon year over year. I have to give a lot of credit um to to Julie and Samantha. They have um only done the schedule full cycle twice now, but they are seeing some patterns. And they are coming up with some new ideas each year to, to try to uh work on the evening, the distribution where we can. So we can dig in um a little bit on the high school and a few points, I think, that we see. One being that if we accept that to run, to divide 370 students over seven periods into sections of 18 evenly. You would need 144 sections at full year equivalent of 151. We're not doing too badly. We're running. We're not running as efficient as we could, but we're, we're close and I think we're close by design. Um, and that was some of the tableways. If you're looking at the sectioning, the under fives, over thirties and in the middle. The distribution pattern hasn't really changed that much since we started reporting. Uh, the majority of the sections are right in there between 10 and 24, but we do have outliers um. On either end of the spectrum. The thing with the high school is a section is not a class or a course, so to speak. It's, it's a meeting time of students. So we have a whole bunch of different variations on that, right? You have a full year course, a semester course or a quarter course, all creating um. A section opportunity and some are quarter sections, some would be half year sections. And so when you marry them together, that's when you get that full year equivalent number. Uh, and then within the schedule, we have not only different meeting configurations, but we have a whole set of sections that meet multiple times. So something like a US history or an English nine would be a multi-section course. It's offered five to seven times potentially over the schedule. And then you also have a singleton course. It's one course with one section. And it's in the schedule and it lands where it landed and that's a pressure point um that we're still trying to figure out. Then the combined sections, that 57, that number 57, um. Is talking about small sections that are combined into. One larger section, so. Uh, example. In art, for example, you'll have a college level and an honors that meet together. So you might have five in one, seven in another, four twelve. Um, so they're, they're teaching multi-level. Um, you might have a um. A French four and a French five that together, still yielding small numbers. And I think that's something that we see over, see over and over again and we would call those by design. So I think in summary, not a whole heck of a lot of movement. We have, we have an average class size of 16 at the high school. Um, we talked a little bit about the distribution of the sections with the majority of them, of them falling in the 10 to 24 range. Uh, the lower core class sizes that were most evident this year are in the English department. Um, we have taken down the other, Julie has reduced the other departments to five, English has six. Uh, members, so that is probably playing a role. There was also some. Efforts to try to distribute English nine differently that I think they're studying uh going into next year. Then I would say we have the small sections by design. Um, something like French, the performing arts and computer science are knowingly low enrollment courses. And we're either trying to maintain um something like French and build enrollment over the years or launch something like computer science. Physics would be, AP physics would be another example that we know going in, enrollment will likely be low. Even though interest, so when they do course selection, it might be high. But because it, this is where that uh singleton course concept comes into play. But because a particular student, once they start getting up into higher levels. Not even academic higher levels, but elective. Their elective may be a conflict with one another. So there may be an interest of 50 students to take a particular course, but because where it lands at the schedule. There are conflicts which only allow so many students to be scheduled into it because they choose something else as the priority. It's a long story to say that singleton option puts a little bit of pressure on the schedule. And um they're gonna continue to study if there's better hand distribution of those singletons. So they're working both with um the scheduling tool that will do everything by the parameters that are set. But also then doing some hand scheduling and some things that get hand scheduled would be special education courses. Or if they see something that's a high miss, they might sit down and try to figure out where they can move things in the schedule to best accommodate student needs. So, long story short, the picture this year looks quite similar to last year, even though we have reduced. Um, some staffing because I think what we're seeing is. Distribution in the organization of the courses are playing just as much role in the class size as the number of sections being offered. And um they are going to be looking at the impact of trying to implement a class size minimum of 10, even if it's a soft implement to drive the schedule. Um, and what options there might be to rotate some of the lower enrollment courses. Um, not lower interest courses, but courses that land with lower enrollment. To see if there's a way to either move them in the schedule, move them into rotation that would free up more kids to take them over time. I think the, the main consideration that and feedback that I hear from um the high school team when they're talking about that is. Sometimes the amount of time that student needs to take the prerequisites by trying to phase something into a two-year rotation. There's a fear that um there'll be a group of kids that miss an opportunity. So I think they're wrestling with it. I know they're talking about it at school council. Um.
Is there a process before you even discontinue a class and just thinking of kids that have sort of plotted? What they would like and are already thinking this year, I'm putting this in my desk morning. It's like, what are you doing?
Nothing is happening yet. They're studying and they're trying to study what all of those ramifications might be. And I think that's what prevented anyone from making too many moves so far. So nine 11, the course that we approved a field trip for tonight, that runs every other year. But you don't need. To take too many prerequisites to get into it. So it's an easy to rotate option. Something like a physics course, you're going to need to take three years of prep courses to get there. So if you discontinue it in one year, it could set you back. So I think they're just trying to wrestle. I think the message is, we understand that this thing, it needs to be as efficient as possible, but yet meet the needs of the students. And it's just, it's constantly under study and review. And I think since we've started this report, it has quite a lot to talk about and discuss. Um, so this year we're moving up the scheduling process. I mean, not the scheduling process, but the program of studies. Will come before the holiday instead of after the holiday, we may give them a little bit more time. In the, in the second semester to, to start planning early for this. So happy to answer questions if I can.
The only other thing that I've observed is sometimes there's a smaller class, but it's a class that actually has two sections and one section has a lot of students and one has very few. And it's because of the way the schedule, so when you go in, like one of them just suddenly. Go away, adding the fact that you have at least two or three of those class.
That's exactly what she's doing and what the concern is. Because I'm, I think there's been discussion of just, you know. Just implement 10 and let the chips fall where they may, but we don't want the chips falling where they may to um put students at a disadvantage. Um, and I think what we're, what we're seeing is we do this year over year again is I think the, the presumption is that it's all about, it's an indicator of overstaffing. But you could offer, if we did everything in semesterized courses, we double our sectioning out of the gate. So there's a lot of different variables at play and I think it's really been an interesting study to see where we can, where they can tweak. And create um. Create efficiency while at the same time trying to figure out ways to maintain the rest of the program for kids.
Question. Um, so I'm sorry, you may have said that, but can you remind me, in the combined section, members there? Are those combined sections represented in the um? In the top section here, the, the breakdown as combined or as if it's.
Like, in the B, so in this section up here. They're in there as, if it's combined.
Yep, it's.
They're in there as if it's combined, yep, it's it the combined total falls into one of these books.
Okay, so that is a combined, yeah, okay. Um That's my only question. Tell them when you're ready for a call. When it re-erth.
Well, I have a quick one too, right? I'd like to look at the old version, but the memorial, you know, they should just off first.
Three times since then.
I thought I thought so.
First, do you mind if I make a comment? Um so since this has, you know, come to be an annual thing, I love the format. I think it's been tightened up um, you know, by necessity, but has become a a really valuable tool. And the thing that struck me this year um maybe it's just my kids are getting older and I'm seeing how things play out in classroom and in their experience a little bit more. But the thing that struck me this year was that when we look at the high school academic sessions, sections, it's bell curve. It's it's kind of a wide bell curve, a little bit wider bell curve, it was a drop off at the end there. But it is a bell curve. And I think that when there's something as complex as scheduling this many sections, new students, that sort of thing. I just want to go on record as saying I am comfortable with this. And not only am I comfortable with this level, provided that the bell curve is representing, you know, a center target that we support as a target area for um class size. That with that distribution, I also think that there is value in having those outliers. I think that there are some students who I know for a fact, there are some students who end up um, you know, suddenly in a really large class who who maybe don't do so well. But there are also students who end up in a really large class who really like a little bit more anonymity than our tiny little district offers. And it's unusual to be able to have that. And on the flip side, you might have students in a really small, that land in a really small class that finds they're able to thrive in a different way because of it. And I think it's okay for us to have that that graduation and not everything's going to fall in this exact deadline. But I I I I'm trying to go on record by saying, I don't just think that's part of the process. I think there's value there and that we can celebrate and enjoy that. Again, knowing that the center is where our target is. Should that center of the bell curve start to shift its way lower in a in a way that seems like, okay, maybe it's time to look at at staffing levels. Is this for the best, you know, most efficient way of doing it? Then that's a different discussion, but right now that's not the case. And I I think that this is a really good demonstration of that. I mean, the middle school is, it's just straight up in there. That's that's a real easy center, center mass. And I I I just, I have come to appreciate the outline pieces of this class distribution. And I think that that's not something that we should shy away from. And I don't think it's something to criticize. I think it's good and that the focus seems to be what is right size for us based on what our target center mass is there.
I think we're always focused, though, on those first two groups to make sure they're there because we want them there and they serve a purpose and it's not just some something that we're not monitoring pushing us there. Yeah.
Yeah, because all of this, a twenty-one percent of under ten still is a pretty big percent, even as you're talking about it as a doctor. So
Yep.
I just want to say, Pam, that I appreciate the work you all are doing, that Julie and her team are doing. Uh, you know, I know that we've pushed uh for continuing this for a while now and it definitely feels like we're being heard and and you're acting on it uh in good faith and making progress. So thank you for continuing that work and and uh and for the for the preview of the work that is still to be come. Thanks.
I probably want to give tip my hat to the scheduling team. The schedule alignment kicked through a curve to them this year too, because um you've heard us talk about Athens, the scheduling tool did not accept the drop, the the way that we were dropping the classes. So there was a lot of uh configuration of the scheduling formats and a lot of calls to ask them to try to get it to work. If you have a student in high school, you know, because your schedules are a little messy at the beginning of the year. Um so I think that was an interesting um layer of challenge, but thank you for the feedback and we're just going to keep working the problem.
Yeah, I I always just, you know, the question I had was more of a process. Um because I saw enough sort of a soft, when we try to ensure classes at least have two students, two I would make sure we're cognizant of if we try to follow through with that, what would follow by any ways. And what are the impacts in terms of classes that that this program might no longer offer? Because it does add, it it can factor into the competitiveness. Like how attractive, what kind of students, schools, if we don't. So I I I wouldn't want us to have a hard line role that we're not going to allow any class have fewer, especially by looking at these percentages. I could have a significant space.
Absolutely good. I appreciate that perspective. I think that's something that's concerned the teaching staff as we've gone into this exercise. And something like French, I think we've vetted and there's a lot of support for me cleaning it and trying to rebuild it, even though we might not hold high numbers. The highest numbers as we get into the envelope. So much appreciated.
Yes, I just have one more thing too. Like it is a little and I don't know, maybe I'm off base a bit on this, but we have seven sections or seven classes in middle school that are above A four and three that are above thirty. That sounds like a lot, especially when middle school is, you know, can be challenging type.
I believe it's course. And and then
Then that's
And just like the marketing, like again, I I am not the closest to the everyday, but just like the mark, we have one marketing teacher and those classes are fill up. And so we can't break through another section because there's not another person to teach it. Similar with um with the the course.
So that's the, that's what I, that's the, it's not a concern.
And that's another probably good point to to piggyback on is so the chorus teacher is the chorus teacher for middle high school. So he's got sections over thirty at grade level at the elementary plus his general music. So he may only have eight kids in a capella, which is an after-school program anyway. So I I think to your point, unless you really dig in and kind of see the what in the why, the numbers can be a little bit deceiving. So what a what a teacher's total load is, is still going to be somewhere between sixty and a hundred students, even though there's a But yes, we equally keep an eye on the over thirties as well and the over twenty fours. Yeah.
I
There's a lot there when you start.
Well, there there is. And I I and I have heard, I'm sorry, I just where there's nothing to be done except just say the things that that, you know, first grade and E S is tiny. Kindergarten is pretty small there too. And I know that enrollment depends or this is not something we can control. But so I it's it's just tricky because it's conversation that we're having in the context of the building project and MSBA has done their own enrollment study. But also, you know, it is.
Do we know, Teresa, do we have numbers on percentage of kids who could go to school, who go to the school? Saying it wrongly, like if there are thirty kids at Essex going to kindergarten and there are only thirty-two kids who could go to kindergarten. It's, I guess it's just saying if someone kindergarten, sorry. But if there are sixty kindergarten, there's an Essex that only thirty are choosing to go to Essex Elementary.
We have the demographic report for MSBA that I can it's posted, but I'll send it to you and it shows you that.
Because I think that context has been helpful, right? Because you said we can't control. I'd say we can control if you see significant fluctuations in percentage of school and children who choose the smaller school.
Oh, surprise.
We did, yeah, we did a, and we did a, um, we looked at a review uh on that uh with private school enrollment a couple of year, two years ago. And if I recall, the the outcome was that it felt like a lot and it felt like a drop in certain times, but it was really very stable, but the the rate of growth reminded me.
I can get back to you. Yeah.
I don't want to derail. I'm sorry.
And I'm, and I don't want to talk off memory right now, but yes, we very, it's pretty steady total over time. We will see periods of upticks at sixth grade and ninth grade. Um elementary, I believe, is in the teens right out of the gate. Um but I can, I can guess that off and bring it out instead of just kind of trying to do it off the top of my head. But when we, when we last looked, there had not been any huge jumps aside from during COVID.
I would be offer as a district is as far as like a a quality public education and high performing school district, which you know, I do think constituents, constituents want to see this is pretty on par with some of the high form public school districts as well. As far as course offering, sections, class sizes.
In in comparability, right? So I think the there's been a lot of I think post-COVID people have made decisions on private school if it meets the needs of their family. And I don't think it's something that's just happening for Manchester peasants. But I think the the underlying fact, fact of our enrollment decline, the overwhelming enrollment decline is we are down two hundred plus students from the bubble. And that's just availability of students to attend. Plus the traditional um competition for students who might, and families who might want to think about going to school elsewhere. So there's just fewer available students, I think, over time. What we kind of knew about it anecdotally was that there was a big turnover in terms of kind of empty nesters exiting town, new families coming in and our enrollment was surging. We also had the new building. So there was a lot of attractive components to it. I'm assuming things are cyclical. It will come back around again. Um the MSBA report isn't showing that. It's not something that it would show because it's straight demographics and birth rate and that's putting downward pressure on most suburban communities right now. So I think our 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 trend line looks no different really than Apple's one or Ipswich or the report. Keep trying to make the best product we can. All right. Um I just had a quick update. We don't have to dig, you know, I don't think we need to spend too much time on it. Uh, we're supposed to be bringing the district improvement plan back to you for final review. We had put it out for um M A R C community input. It went out in the newsletter. We did two direct mails to families. We've heard, oh, sorry, wrong slide. We heard from twenty-four people. Um I think it went out to seven hundred plus households, fifteen hundred emails, though not a great return rate. Um but it has been out there for a while. Um and we just, it was a very open-ended question. So we've enlisted AI and done a quick kind of summary of the sentiments that came in. Um so we have, of the twenty-four respondents, they, we asked them what school they had students at and based on what they responded, this is kind of the total heads that they reported by school. The biggest return was from Manchester Memorial Parents. Um so a couple of things that we might want to think about um in terms of how we're framing things, but academic focus was clearly emphasized as something um that we should be looking at. It it seemed to be framed though in a instead of S E L D E I, more traditional academics and more emphasis on core instruction and measurable academic outcomes. We did raise whether or not we should be adding something technical in terms of an objective, in terms of increasing student scores. So this this may have us think about that. Um there were some fairly strong feelings expressed about and concerns expressed about um having S E L and D E I um represented in the uh in the report of in the plan. Um with some commentary about, you know, the clarity of it, which I think we take as an important point in in working on how we can make it clearer for people on how a strong um foundation in those tools does lead to student achievement. I think that's on us to make that clearer. And then some some individuals, um who just reported that it it wasn't something that schools should be doing. Um so I think we can talk about whether or not we want to take a look at strategic plan at the end of this district improvement cycle, or if we want to continue on the timeline that we've established. And then some good points around communication um and clarity and accountability um and also engagement. And then um a suggestion about can we make the plan easier to digest? Like it's it's a lot. It's got even a long cover page. It's many pages long. There's lots of objectives to really follow it. You've got to link back. So is there some type of a one pager or two pager that can summarize it? So I think that's a a good idea. We've heard that in a couple of places. So I think once we land on what the final content will be, we can try to come up with um infographic or a one page or two page high level summary of what the plan is. So I guess my question to you is some of this is, I think, in sync with what we heard from the committee. I'm not sure what you'd like to do with some of the feedback around S E L and D E I.
Please speak a little bit about how the strategic plan that those pieces are embedded in seem to be.
This community input, correct? Yeah, we had a steering committee. And these, it's mentioned, so it's the number of times these types of things showed up in the text responses. So yeah, we had, um, I think Teresa and Jake were on it. We had a strategic planning steering committee about four years ago now. Um yeah, four or five years at least.
I was gonna say at least longer. I think it might have been in my first year.
We had started and then had to stop for a bit and then started again. So it was a while. It was right after COVID, probably twenty-one, twenty-two, spring twenty-two? Spring twenty-two.
Yeah, it's after.
Anyway, so there was a steering committee. Uh and I can't remember everybody who was on it, but there were teachers from each school, um parents, uh school committee members. Uh we met virtually. We had a um a consulting team that helped us through the process. Uh we were really trying to get to a plan for the future and a plan that wasn't necessarily about the people who were here now. Um as part of the information gathering, we, everyone reviewed all of the district. Like we do a lot of the program reviews and um third-party assessments and programs. So all of those factored in, we took a look at what Jesse was asking of us at the time. And then we did a pretty comprehensive survey of the community, over seven hundred um respondents and all of that information kind of got fed into uh the structure of the strategic plan, which is over seven hundred.
Wow.
Yeah.
And and it was really the focus of our first three years of the district improvement plan, right? This is the, this is the second version of that based on the strategic plan. So I'd I'd hesitate to back off of what we have in there because I think we've already downplayed it from our first three years. I'd hesitate to back off even further based on the relatively lower numbers.
Significantly.
Um and you know, we've, and you know, to the point of the comment here, commentary here, you know, we have increased the academic curriculum instruction kind of focus in this strategic, in this dip. So um you know, I I think probably by the time you do some of the communications and clarity kind of stuff, maybe that'll help a little bit, but I would hesitate to back off what we have in there.
And I'm taking that away. I'm sorry, but okay.
I think it's important to emphasize that including S E L and D E I does not take away our academic focus, that in order to deliver rigorous academics, we have to provide those because the evidence is that they lead to better academic outcomes. I don't know how to communicate that to people who don't want to hear that, but to say that that S E L has an unclear impact on academics is is it falls according to the studies that have been done on that.
And I think my takeaway is that we do need to do a better job with the language or the structure of how we're creating the linkage. So I think that's definitely on us to do. Um our plan doesn't even really use D E I, which I thought was interesting. So we do use cultural competency and inclusiveness, which I it might be splitting hairs, but I think is trying to get at something different than a national, what's, let's see, there's a national agenda.
And S E L is, sorry, go ahead. S E L is class, is classroom culture and relationships in the classroom. It is not, I think that people sometimes think that it is a period in the day or that kids are taking a significant time away from academics to do their S E L lesson when really it's embedded and oftentimes taken at key moments as learning, you know, as as learning opportunities arise.
And one of the pieces we've tried to approach is that S E L training and mindset is even more for the adults sometimes than the kids, because if you don't so gets at some of the frustration points we're hearing too around instruction, if you don't know So gets at some of the frustration points we're hearing too around instruction. If you don't know your students. Not not know them like people, but don't understand the complexities of a of the audience in front of you. You can't design the instruction to reach the broad. Need. So getting people into that headspace to have um. To have the emotional intelligence to see just beyond what might be on the circumstance and take a little deeper. So I that I do think we can do better. At trying to communicate it. It's not the simplest thing to communicate. Um, if you're not in the classroom with twenty kids, all with very different learning profiles, some with specific learning needs, some with just. It it it's something that we're gonna have to figure out and keep working at how we're trying to communicate. I think on the fourth. When we talk a little bit about our assessment and the profile of our students and where we're seeing some of the challenges to making gains. I think the case for continuing with it is there because one of the pieces that we're struggling with is getting. All of the structural and systems work to make its way down to instructional change and effective instructional delivery. So. Um, I'm heartened to hear you don't think we should change gears, but it it's, you should probably keep an eye on.
Yep. Um, I'm I'm with you that we should not change gears and it occurs to me while we're having this conversation that this is. A great exercise for us in cultural competency. Now, we we now know that when we put this out. Review that we will get a. Small number of people responding and of those people, some of the thirteen who responded about those two things. Feel this way. So we now know that there are some small number of people who feel that way. I don't think that number is in any way indicative of something that should drive us to change what we're doing. That's a very tiny percentage of people, but it's nice to know that they're there and willing to share it so we can be aware of it. Information.
The the one thing I'm I'm trying to figure out, because D E I is is just. Right? It's something that I mean, oh, right. The only thing I see here is we we talk about using an equity. Because I don't see D E I. I just play that thing now and what can you see if you develop it. It doesn't talk about that. So. My one thing is kind of what you're saying. I think some people just don't understand. Yeah, and there's a huge national conversation about it right now and a lot of um concerns with um. Gender issues. Um, I'm sure there are concerns with health curriculums. There was the. And rule yesterday, say, um, school Supreme Court ruling this summer about um parents being able to opt out of certain things. So. I'm I'm not surprised by it. You know, it's it's a national conversation that's taking place and there are legitimate. Cultural competency. Everybody has a different perspective about this. Um, I think we need to be mindful. I think we need to be. Working on communicating how it complements and supports our instructional goals. Um, I don't, you know. I think we've been talked over the past couple of years about this concept of the traditional measures and. Should we be celebrating Boston Magazine? Should we be celebrating um U S News, you know, in in writing that way? So I think it's just, it's a place.
Still a comeback to that conversation.
Yeah, and and still a place that we're at is how do you, you know, to Jake's point, what is success? What is achievement? It's going to be, is it different for every family and every student? And I think that's a hard part.
I think with the twenty four total respondents on this, out of all the people who received this in their inbox multiple times. Tell me that people are all right, that people are quiet when they're going along and. Continuing on and don't have a reason to have to dive in. If you're if I'm sitting here and I'm stewing on something that I'm really frustrated about and I get that. Now I'm ready to engage. Or if I'm really overjoyed, I might be ready to engage. But in the middle. We have people who are generally satisfied, willing to voice their opinions when needed.
I was on school council at Memorial that I resoundingly heard that um. Through survey results, parents like. The belonging and school climate at Memorial specifically came in a very strong um. So I want to echo. Not changing things.
I'm trying to figure out some language to clarify some things, um, but we will. Have that final report back to you on the board.
Okay.
I was gonna do a little dip into um. I see building project configurations, but I think what's David's, we already.
It's not sure.
It's not sure. I think our timelines got, we're gained about a month on our timeline, so I think we have plenty of time to talk about it and it's. It's good.
Well, on to, we want to. Break to new business. We have some other time constraints.
I think she's.
I do not.
It's a very honest answer.
It's coming up. Do you want to take the vote on competency determination?
Sure.
With, and we will incorporate all of the editors' suggestions. Name sets. I'll make a motion to approve the competency. Second.
Discussion. Second, oh, you're very second. Uh, okay, discussion.
Do right back. And it's passing along the first.
With no discussion, then we'll take a vote to approve. All those in favor? County store.
Yes.
Oh, that's right.
And also you didn't let me vote.
That's right, I'm sorry. Yeah, you can't, I'm sorry.
That was just the.
All right, so we will move on to our special education program review and welcome Allison. Oh, it's our director of student services.
Thank you so much. And Pam, are you going up to the slencher or I'll meet up again?
I can drive, I think. I say that. I'll be not used to. I'm ninety nine point nine percent sure I hold the most up to date in your packet. I'm excited about this. We're working on it. I know you've been working on it a very long time. Michelle has been right there with you. Um. But we do this cyclically. Usually we do it once every two or three years, um, just to keep everybody up. In the loop and up to date on what we're doing and um aware of. The fantastic programming that we have in special education. So I'm just gonna draw it and turn it over to Allison, who's more than capable of telling our story.
Okay, that sounds great. Will the slides be up there?
Oh, gosh.
Okay, just checking. I have them in front of me as well, but just so we can be in sync. That would be great.
I'm gonna do this.
It's great. I, some of you are newer to me and some of you I know very well, but I'll just say that I have been in this role. For year fourteen and prior to that, I worked in um the Hamilton One M. Regional School District, part of the time as a director of student services as well. And um, part of the actually worked more in general education. So. I have an appreciation for how complex special education is, what it's like to know a lot about it. And what it's like to approach it when I didn't know as much about it. Um, but it was certainly a big part of um the work in schools. But you just, it's very complex and I feel like every year that I do this job, I learn more. Because of the laws, the policies, the interpretations. So what I'm looking to do tonight. Is to give you an overview of special education in this district. Um, what guides our decision making and then the financial implications for special ed in this district. And what some of the things we're doing about that, because special ed is um, it's a big driver. Of the district operating budget. Um, it is the most volatile um. Element in the budget uh most of the time. And so I'm looking to um. Explain how that all works and also what we're doing to try to get a hold on um. Stabilizing the budget more through some strategies that we use that are actually very effective in reducing budget volatility. So. Um, we can go to the first slide and um we can move on there. So we decided, talking with Pam and Michelle, to actually start with this slide, which shows um. As I said, special education is, can be, it is less in this community, but it can be a volatile. Element um of the operating budget. And for us, you can see that special education is twenty six percent of the budget. In uh M A R S D. And when you look at the Cape and comparables, um comparable districts. You can see that we're really not an outlier at all. Twenty six percent. We're kind of in the middle um of where districts are um in terms of percentage of the operating budget. You can go to the next slide. And currently we have two hundred and thirty one students on I E Ps. That is nineteen point six percent of all students. And we've been around that two thirty mark for a very long time, but um, well, as you'll see. The percentage has increased because our overall enrollment has decreased. And this is just a quick description of the distribution of students in different levels of special ed. Programming, most are in full inclusion. Um, we have seventeen percent substantially separate programs. Which doesn't mean that they have no inclusion. It's just the large part of their day is in substantially separate academic classes. And eight per five point five percent of our students are in out of district placement. So this is really just a quick overview of where we are and Pam can go the next slide. And the data that I'm sharing with you tonight, it is based on assets. So that's the most up to the minute, twenty twenty six. But of course, we don't have comparables there, so we have to go to other resources. And unfortunately, when we use the testing website, they're a few years behind in terms of their data. And that's where we have to get our comparables. We also looked at various local databases um for this data. And I have noted on some, so you can get a sense of that. Um, what do we do in special education? There are a lot of different types of services. We provide evaluations, inclusion support, applied behavioral analysis for students um. With different certain levels of autism. Um, we have small group classes. We have a number of therapies. Speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy. And we also have students who benefit from assistive technology. Um, and augmentative communication. You can switch. We also um have a number of specialized programs and these programs for. Not all of them, but for the most part, they've been put in place during my tenure here. Um, we did have preschool when I came here. Um, and but our preschool has expanded a lot in the last few years, um rather dramatically. We used to have. Around at three years, we had above ten students and now we have over forty students. So it's it's been, that's been a big expansion for us. That includes students with disabilities and care pals who pay tuition to be in the program. Um, we were a new newer program called Rise that's for students with complex needs. Um, complex disabilities, genetic disorders, um, some students with autism. And we use A B A methodologies in supporting those students. They get typically have a lot of different therapies as well. Given the complexity of their needs. Um, we have a program called Intensive Reading and Language Program, which. Softly known as Earl as the acronym, and that is a program for students with dyslexia. Um, that goes from grades two through twelve, looking different along the way as students start to be able to exit that program and do more inclusion. We have a program called S A L for students with higher functioning autism and emotional behavioral needs. Um, that program actually becomes a program called Transitions, when do students go to high school? Um, and we have a program that's newer too called ACE, um Academic and Communication Enhancement. That serves students with neurological and communication disabilities. Um, and also more complex profiles in that program is grades four through twelve. And has several tuition students in that program for other districts. So you can change. In addition, so we're kind of talking about the continuum here from students who are supported in the inclusion setting. To our specialized programs and then we do have twenty one students who are in out of district programs, which range from collaboratives. That are um are typically part of the North Shore Education Consortium Collaborative. Um, with the area school districts to private day schools. We sometimes also place students in other public schools. That have specialized programs and we take tuition students do. And then we have a small number of students. Um, in residential programs, which are twenty four, seven, three hundred and sixty five days a year. Um, I thought it'd be important in talking about special education to talk a little bit about how do students get here in the first place? So I'm going to speak very briefly about eligibility and how students get into special education. Um, to begin with, the reason we have special education is um a couple of laws. One is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It's been around since nineteen seventy five and it mandates a free and appropriate public education for students with disabilities. Um, it was most recently reauthorized in two thousand and four and when that occurred. We added a lot of regulations around transition and preparing students with disabilities for the co-secondary transition. Um, so that was the major change then. Also, very interestingly, from my perspective anyway. Um, we also have Massachusetts Special Education Law. Sometimes it's not exactly the same as the federal law, which can make things really interesting. Part of why we have lawyers um to interpret all this and case law, but that was last updated in twenty twenty two. Um, and there um, that law was put in effect in nineteen seventy two. And it became a model for the federal law, which tells you that Massachusetts. Has always had very, very high standards um and been a leader in special education because we really set. The model for the federal law. And we are had to be held to very high standards as a result. Um, parents have a lot of rights under the Individuals. With Disabilities Education Act. And this is a list of them. I won't go into great detail. If anyone has questions, feel free to ask. I could, you know, talk for hours about this and I'm sure that would, you know, could just be really overwhelming. But um, what is, what I think is really important for you to know is. Student rights are embedded in parent rights under the I D A. So the way that the law was written. Is for parents to literally be the ones who ensure that districts comply with the law. It sounds a little interesting, I guess. It's um. What is the question where that that was fair to parents when the law was written that way? Um, it it places a lot of responsibility. Parents have a lot of rights, but they also really have that responsibility. We have the Department of Ed that comes in. Every three years and looks at our programming and we had that review recently and we had no findings. And we did absolutely fantastic and we had very, very high parent ratings in our survey, which I'm extremely proud of. Um, however, um, the Department of Ed will look at compliance, they'll look at some technical issues, but they're. Not looking at quality the way that a parent will. And so parents have a lot of responsibility. And they have a lot of rights and some parent, for some parents, it's easier to access those rights than others. Um, and there's a whole industry of experts and lawyers and advocates that can help parents with the process. Um, and because it's very complex. So I'll move on from that. One of the rights that parents have is to dispute resolutions. So if parents don't agree with an eligibility finding, or services we're recommending, or placement that the team has, if the team hits an impasse around placement, parents have a right to dispute resolution. They can do that locally by having a meeting. They can request an independent evaluation, which is essentially an evaluation that's done by an outside provider within certain parameters, that I won't get into all the nitty-gritty technical aspects. But the district is paying for another evaluation to essentially get a second opinion of what the district is proposing or finding. There's mediation. There's the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, which can come in and facilitate meetings for us to help resolve disputes. Parents can file complaints with the Department of Education, called the Problem Resolution System. Parents can file complaints with the Office of Civil Rights. And also, there is the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, where parents can pursue the process through a hearing or a settlement conference. So lots of different ways to resolve disputes. And again, that the district may initiate dispute resolution, but often it is parents who are feeling like their child isn't getting what they need, so they have those options. Some of them are free, some of them are very expensive for everyone involved. How do we determine who's eligible for special education? The student has to have a disability. That's not a diagnosis, a disability. They have to have a disability that fits into certain categories under special education law. And in addition to the disability, they have to be making a lack of effective progress as a result of the disability. Another reason we have lawyers, that can be hard to determine. What does that really mean? There can be different opinions around what effective progress is. Typically, it's just progress in a year's growth in a year's time. And the students, they are developing grade level skills or post-grade level skills. And the third criteria, and all these must be present, is the student must require specially-designed instruction. So sometimes students are not performing well, that they might not require specialized instruction from a provider who is specially trained, like a speech pathologist, an OT, a special education teacher. They, and a good example actually is students who are frequently absent. Students who are frequently absent, student might have disability, they might not be making progress. Is it the disability? Is it the absence? But some, they might qualify for some home hospital tutoring or other supports, but it's not exactly specially-designed instruction that they require. So these are all criteria that we talk about when we're determining if a student is eligible for special education. And I'll continue to say more about that on the next slide. It's a team of parents and educators making these decisions, and we rely, in order to determine, is it effective progress? Do they need specially-designed instruction? Do they have a disability? We have an evaluation. We observe the student. We collect progress data on the student to determine if they're making effective progress. We discuss their disability-related needs if they have a disability. And we look at the standard of meaningful educational benefit and effective progress if they're eligible for writing an IEP. So that was a quick overview of like, what is, how do you get there? How do you get into special education? I'm happy to talk about our trends and our eligibility data. So currently, we have 231 students in special education, which I said earlier. And you can see that we've been in that neighborhood for a long time. We have been as high as 238, as slow as 225, but it's kind of in that same range. Our percentage has gone up because our enrollment has gone down. The number of students with disabilities, you would think, maybe as our enrollment decreases, the numbers would decrease a bit as well. There are questions about why that hasn't happened, and we can talk more about that as I, as I go through. But that, in fact, is what has happened. Over time, the numbers have been pretty similar.
Have we benchmarked that? Because I saw the benchmarking on the budget.
Yeah, we have. Other districts are showing a similar trend in increasing percentages. And when you look at other districts here on this slide, you can see that our 19.6 is not an outlier. It's actually on the lower side. But, but all districts have been demonstrating that trend of more identifying more students in special education.
And in our North Shore Roundtable, we've talked about this quite a bit. Fathered our directors frequently with our questions. We're all, we are all coping with the declining general enrollment trend and increasing special education. And is it, has something changed in terms of, the law hasn't changed. I mean, we said the law's been on for a while.
Are we identifying more students at an earlier age, or are we, is it distributed equally across?
That's a great question. A couple of things that I'm seeing is that we're seeing more, I mean, there's a lot of reasons for this, and can even go back to tier one instruction and MTSS. And when are we making the call between, is it special education, or could they continue to have MTSS? So those are factors, for sure, more with like our specific learning disability population. But we're definitely seeing, and I'll show you in a couple of minutes, a trend toward more preschoolers coming in with high need, more preschoolers with disabilities. So you're getting that growth there. And then we have more disabled students who are moving through our system. And our numbers are also going up with the 18 to 22 population. So we have some students, we're required, we're responsible for students until they earn a diploma or turn 22. So that those numbers, 18 to 22, that, you know, significantly disabled population, that's growing too. So it's definitely on both ends. But then there's some other factors too that we can talk about as we go. But it's, but that's what we're seeing in this district. And the trend, the trend is similar. So. We're good here. Okay. And just thought it would be interesting for you to see. So when we look at, to me, when numbers are going up or staying about the same when you might think they would go down, I always want to look at, okay, what categories are most students in, in special education? And if I look at that, like which categories have grown, which I will show you too, and then you start thinking, are there some other things I need to look at around this? So our biggest category, and this is typical for school districts, is specific learning disabilities. So those are students that have a reading, a writing, or a math disability. They require mediation to try to close the gap with their skills. And these are students that very frequently, I won't say always, but very frequently end up exiting special education at some point. Their skills are lower, they need remediation, they get remediated. And if we're doing a good job, and we are, they, for the most part, or I'm going to get, I'm actually doing some research now, so I could quantify, how many do move out of special education? But if we're really doing our job, they're, they're becoming remediated, and they're, we won't have as many students by high school who have a specific learning disability, need special education, because the gap has been closed. So you can see that's very large. Another large area for us is health disabilities that students with, it can be anything from ADHD to diabetes, but the most common is ADHD. And those numbers have actually been going down a lot. You'll, you'll see that. Primarily because not all students with ADHD need specially-designed instruction. Sometimes they do. Sometimes they have delays in reading and math. That's kind of common. But, but we're seeing students that might need accommodations, but not specially-designed instruction. But if you switch to the next slide, you can really see, I believe it's on the next slide. You can see these trends. So you can see the health category, just, those are students who may need accommodations, if they have ADHD, but are tending not to qualify. The specific learning disability category has gone up. And that is something we're looking at, like, why? Is there more we can do with tier one instruction? Where are we making the determination between MTSS and special education? How are we differentiating between a disability and low performance? So that's something we're looking at right now, because those numbers have been going up. There's, just like everywhere, we're seeing more students with autism, and that is all districts. That is a national trend. And for students with autism, that's just more, I mean, it's just more clear in terms of what they need and why they're receiving special education. And then we have the neurological category. It's kind of a lower incidence category. Complex profiles, that, that's kind of been up and down a little bit. Communication, which tends to be speech and language, that has gone down a little bit.
What about intellectual? I mean, it's a lot of, so what is, yeah. I mean, it's not, it's not fine compared to the others, right?
Right. Small number. The trend is huge. And that's, we're just seeing more needy students who have intellectual disabilities.
What is?
Oh, intellectual disability is students who have, their cognitive ability is substantially below average. So for example, an average IQ, that was a kind of energy, is like right in the center of averages of 100. So they're in the low 70s or below in terms of their functioning. So they are needing typically a separate curriculum, paced at their level, and substantially separate, plus students who have intellectual disabilities. And to service those students, although just in our ACE program, but we are seeing a trend with more.
I just wondered, because with that, is I will toss with their students?
Yes, that can, because there's a, the thing for us, though, is because we have specialized programs, we often can, we have a structure for accommodating students, but it is why we've had to add programs over time, like the ACE program, the RISE program. We've had to add programming to make that work. And also, some of those students are out of district, because their needs are even more substantial and unique. And some, it's also, when you have eight students, you may not have a goal for, because they might be scattered, you know, preschool through grade 12. So those are factors too. And can we have a new district program, or do they need to go out of district? And we do have a few students who have been out of district for a long time, because they were the only one within a couple, you know, grades that had that profile. So we didn't have any much to live, so that can be a factor. Great question, though. So you get a sense of where, that's something we're always monitoring, and we're always trying to think ahead, like, what will we need in terms of programming based on the trends that we're seeing?
I know. That's what I'm trying to get, because I've seen the numbers, and I assume they're not all the same. Like, some different categories require different kinds of programs, and some programs are going to be more expensive.
Yes. So I mentioned this earlier, you know, as numbers are staying the same, as the population goes down, and we're thinking about the Y, you can see that since FY '21, we're, you know, we've doubled, more than doubled, the number of students with disabilities in preschool. And the students with autism, we've also had a substantial increase going into preschool. And we'll talk about what later, what that looks like in terms of our specialized programs and the needs around, around that. We started at a program called RISE for children in kindergarten. Right now, we have kindergarten through two, and we have more children coming to that program for students who have more severe.
And is that a trend across other districts, where we, is there significant updates?
Right. It is a trend. Yes, yes. We have, I've been trying to other districts that are just, they're physically running out of space in terms of all the preschool classrooms that they're needing to have, driven by students with disabilities. I mean, our numbers allow us to take a lot of peer pals. We have three classrooms, and we can spread our students with disabilities across the classrooms, and they have great programming. But there are other, other districts that are, yeah, literally, so it's really. I mean, part of it is, you know, trends around some of the disabilities, like autism, and also just our technological advances for young children that have low birth weight, that are, we can just do a lot more in terms of having children survive. And some of those children end up, like, completely typical, and they don't have disabilities, and some that have more severe disabilities.
I think we're getting to some.
Sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. There's a lot of things happening right now. I think they really are. You're taking us, helping us forward. This is, no, I love your question. So let's talk about the money. So how do we budget for special education? Because it's changing. There are all these trends, and we're seeing more high-need students. And sometimes students just move in. And hopefully, we, you know, then they have an IEP that was written by another district, and we have to figure out what to do and how to implement it. And that actually, a couple of years ago, happened to me in an, and I think it was in October. And we had two students with very significant needs move in in October. And I ended up creating a, hiring a teacher and creating a classroom for them, because it was less expensive than sending them out of district. And one of them, I couldn't find a place that far. Like, and so it was really, so you have to pivot. You have to be really flexible. But that being said, we start with a zero-based budget. What does that mean? That means that I talk to the teachers and the chair of people, and I look at my numbers, and I look at trends. I look at who's moving from preschool to kindergarten? Who's moving from elementary to middle school? What are the needs? Looking at all the IEPs, looking at the specialized programs, and kind of who's moving in and who's moving out of a grade level, who's graduating, who's going to 2018 to 22 program? I look at all of that data, and then I determine, what do we need for staffing? Teachers, TAs, therapists, are the therapy caseloads going up? Are they going down? So we look at that every single year. We don't say, well, this is what I have, and so I'll just kind of keep it, and maybe I'll add a little. I'm constantly restructuring based on what the student needs are. And that's just a little on that chart, like some of the transition, key transitions that, that we look at. We have to be in touch with early intervention. There's a Cape Anne Early Intervention that services children who are under three years old, and we're in frequent contact with them, who's potentially transitioning to preschool, who has high needs. So that's all on our radar screen. And we can be, well, we need to do a transfer programming. And this is a chart just of our special education spending, and where does the money go? And like all of education, the majority is going to, is going to staff. It's very, very typical. And then the rest is not surprisingly out of district tuitions and transportation. This is just the trend over the last 10 years of our specialized teacher staffing versus general ed teacher staffing. Correct, Pam?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this chart. And you can see that Um, and you can see that back in FY seventeen, we were a little lower than we are now. But we purposefully invested in specialized in district programs in order to meet the needs of children and keep them in their community and give them high quality programming. Um, which has resulted in a lot of, of district savings. Um, and our numbers kind of went up for a little while, but we keep zero base budgeting and restructuring. And so they actually over the last couple of years have, we've been able to tighten up, um, some of the staffing, uh, based on needs. And, um, our staffing is a little lower, but it does fluctuate based on what the student needs are.
Just because this is a staffing appears in different types of budgets, this is just our operating budget staffing and we've noted that. So this aligns with those budget books.
And this is our teaching assistant trend and you can see that, um, we are lower than we were in, um, twenty seventeen. But at the same time, it does fluctuate a lot because that's very, very sensitive to students and their needs, um, for teaching assistance support. Um, most of our, unlike a lot of other districts, most of our teaching assistants are connected to specialized programs. Where they're under the oversight of a teacher, they have very specialized programming. We don't do, we're, we rarely have like a student that we just give them a one-on-one and hope it goes well. We really have very structured programming and the teaching assistants are under that programming. We have at each, in each building, one or two moderate special education teaching assistants. Who provide some classroom support, but those numbers are very, very low. Most of the TAs are, are specialized and that's actually teaching assistance. It's from, um, the DESI website, the RADAR website. And it includes all teaching assistants, including, we always have a couple like library and other teaching assistants in addition to special. But special education is most of it. Look, it's always the revenue now, we talked about costs. So you can see that our sources of revenue for special education, most of it's coming from the operating budget. We also, I'll get into more detail about this, we, um, receive money from Circuit Breaker. And that is for high cost out of district placements, we get a certain amount of reimbursement. We receive, um, some money through school choice for special education. So basically the way that it works is we get the flat reimbursement per student through school choice. And then there's a formula, an increment that we use to look at the student services and calculate additional reimbursement. So we get some additional reimbursement, um, for school choice students who receive special education. Um, we also have some tuition students, right now we have four. Um, we receive preschool tuition from peer pals, um, that actually helps fund the whole program, which is really nice. Um, and we have some grants that are a small part of our function.
Sorry, can you just expand on that? I know, briefly, like, let's, let's, uh, I, I think that, that's just like such a win-win. To have peer pals, to have peer pals and that tuition fund helps alleviate some of the costs of some of this in district. And you have students, disability students who are neurotypical, all in the classroom learning together. I just think it's such a beautiful model and it makes so much sense financially and I just, I'm saying, I'll shout.
Thank you so much. And you'll see our revenue is, it's very healthy from that program. And parents are wonderful about supporting our.
I've only heard amazing things. And my, my kiddo was in it and I've only heard amazing things since then. I just think it's, it's an awesome thing.
Um, you can see revenue from our tuition students, we have one student in the sale program. Um, and that is the tuition we receive for that student. Um, and we base our tuition on, we look at, um, the staffs, the staffing and the salaries. And, um, figure it out based on that, um, like how fresh out, always. And then we have three students in the ACE high school program. That particular program, it's extremely unique, um, in the students that we take and can accommodate. There aren't even real, there aren't even any special ed private schools nearby. I mean, there are some, but they're not very close, um, that can serve a student with that profile. So as a result, we do get, um, a decent number of tuition referrals from that program, which is very nice. Um, and the students have fit in beautifully and it gives our students a bigger cohort, so that is also a win-win. And, um, so we get some tuition from them. So this year it's a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar, um, tuition amount.
Which that's, which looks right, that's if students, you get a tuition from the set date districts. Because this is the best place to meet those students' needs.
Yeah, yeah, which is amazing. Much, um, it's, it's a much higher amount than school choice, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah, yes. And, and they're really, the students we take, we're, we can say no. We can only choose the students who are the best match for our students. So it has been working out really nicely socially for students and all of that. As well as financially. Um, and then, uh, current revenue for preschool, we have twenty eight peer pals right now. And we're receiving four hundred thousand dollars in tuition, so, um, from those peer pals. So that is, um, it's a win-win, like you said, it's great. I just want to explain a little bit about Circuit Breaker. For those who are not familiar, I'm sure you've heard the term many, many times. But basically the way that it works is, um, each year we're given by, by the state a threshold, a claim threshold. So any placement that costs more than the claim threshold, you're going to, um, take the tuition. You're going to subtract the claim threshold and the remaining amount, they will give us some years. Seventy, up to seventy five percent reimbursement for that remaining amount. So if it's a sixty thousand dollar placement, you're not getting much back. But if it's a hundred thousand dollar tuition, you're subtracting the threshold. Multiply the remaining amount by seventy five percent. And the reimbursement, which we actually don't get same year, you get it a year later, in that case would be, um, thirty four thousand dollars. So, um, it can be very helpful with some of these tuitions that are two hundred thousand dollars.
So how do you fund it in the near term?
We do, we do, but there's a revolving account because every year we're taking some. And do you want to say more about that?
Yes, so it is a revolving account. What we try to do is, and, and it's allowed by statute, we try to reserve the current year revenues for the next year budget. So we're not anticipating using revenues that we do not already have in our pocket. So you will notice at least for the past two years, we've been able to do that. Um, for example, last year we collected one point two million in FY twenty five, so we'll be using one point two million, um, in the upcoming budget. Exactly, so. Yes, so we always have that in that, which is our fund, but we can only hold it for a year, that's it. So you receive it the year after, you can hold it for one year and then you have to spend it before. So that's what we use. Because there have been years where we think we're getting it at reimbursement, for example, during COVID. And then all of these students, all of a sudden, were not placed and the program shut down and we did not have that revenue. Our tuition's necessarily, weren't necessarily one hundred percent as well, but we didn't have that money here.
And it's important to note that the claim threshold changes every single year, so that, and it always goes up. So that we're, you know, little, so that we're getting a little less. Um, and then you get seventy five percent or not as much. So lately it's been seventy five percent, which is the maximum, but we don't, we don't know from year to year.
So it's an annual lobby to get that number, um, to stay. And I think in years coming forward, something we need to keep an eye on because state revenues are scarce, that's some place where they can make adjustments.
Great, great segue to out of district. Thank you. Perfect. All right, oops, so, um, so when we look at out of district, I'm just going to break it down for you a little bit. So you have a sense of where does the money go without a district? As I mentioned before, we have twenty one students out of district, which is actually a low number for a public school district to have. Out of district. Um, we, um, because we have strong in district programs, um, but we can't meet everyone's need in district. And so we have some students who are out of district. Seventeen students are in day programs of different types, collaborative, private, et cetera. Um, and then four students are in residential. You can see just how expensive residential is when you see that it's four students and it's forty three percent of the out of district budget. So that is, that is a large, um, percentage of budgets, small number of kids. And then if you're wondering like, oh, what type of, what's, what disability types are most likely to, you know, have, you know, without a district placements? You can, um, see that learning disability is a smaller percentage, um, it's five students with kind of, with more complex learning disabilities. And those programs are not as expensive, it's nine percent of tuition costs. Students with mental and behavioral health needs, um, twenty eight point, twenty eight percent of students or six students. Twenty three percent of tuition costs. Um, and then developmental and severe disabilities, really, when you look at the fact that most of students in eighteen to twenty two programs also have developmental and severe disabilities. You're looking at almost three quarters of the budget, um, because of the number of students out and the expense of those placements. And, um, another thing that's just happened and it's really escalated since the pandemic is the cost of out of district placements and all of them have grown substantially. And in particular for students who have more severe and complex needs, the program increases are very, very large. Um, you can just see these examples, this is an example, what, what some of these programs cost. These are just four examples of programs for students with more severe needs. What it cost in FY twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty six? You can see changes, um, increases between thirty six and fifty two percent over that time.
Fifty two percent is.
Yeah, so it's, it's taking, it's having a larger and larger impact on our budget, even when it's not a large number of students.
Yes, it's, are the tuition of these schools increasing by quite a bit as well? Like I, I worked on land, their tuition's going up.
There's a scarcity. Quite a bit.
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit. I mean, I can remember when I was forty and now it's seventy.
Yes, so like we set the prices for the ACE, the ACE program where students tuition in. And we can, you know, decide who to take and who fits the, who best fits the, the program. These schools can do that as well and they can charge what they, what they charge.
And some of them have very long waiting lists. You have students be waiting for.
There's been a year. For them as well.
Yeah, I mean, no, yeah.
And at all, they, they are having staffing concerns, which is creating scarcity of beds, which is creating the waiting list for the program. So they're, they're increasing their costs, their salaries and they're dealing with inflation like everybody else. So there's, there's not a nothing behind, they're not, no, yeah, arbitrary increases, but they don't, they're not subject to the same pools of increases we have, right?
About two and a half, what?
Yeah.
Yeah, great, exactly. Well, there's, um, uh, the operational services division sets the increase annually for these programs. Shortly after the pandemic, they authorized a fourteen percent increase one year. Other years it might be four or five percent or, but you can see what, what's happened over time. And, and this might even be on a different slide, but I'll just say that also programs can do something called reconstruction. Where they say, we're renovating our buildings, we need a new library, we're doing this and that, we need to do this to meet student needs. And they can, um, make a case for very substantial increases in, um, in their tuition. So you can see what's happened and also that explains why our percentage, um, of the out of district budget dedicated to severe needs, um, students and their placements has gone from thirty two percent in twenty nineteen to now fifty six percent.
We have no.
We do, I mean, the only control we really have is to have strong industry. That's the control that we have.
Right, so the point there, as you said.
Because there are some students that really need something else. Yes. Um, and I mentioned earlier that we have some increases on the preschool end and also the eighteen to twenty two end. And this is just a little chart of, um, and, you know, a kind of a modest increase over time in eighteen to twenty two programs, but some of these students have been in out of district programs for a long time. And they're going to continue in those programs till they're twenty two. But we also service some of those students in district. So we have cost effective programming until age eighteen and then they're exiting and going on to our roles for out of district. And the, the costs go up at that time too. So that's something that's, um, helpful when they can access our programs, but we don't. Because we don't have the eighteen to twenty two program, then that can be above, um, in the tuitions. And we can see, I, I mapped out like, what does it look like a few years from now? Because we do have a lot of students in, in the ACE program. And you can see that in FY twenty eight, um, expecting to have eight students attending age to twenty two. So it's projected to go up.
That's still not does such an excellent that we would want to consider having an in district program for that.
Because we're small, we don't have any more physical space. And the students in those programs tend to need more educational programming, which is even more space. We're really not set up well to do that. Um, just, this is a question that comes up a lot, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew the answer to it and many of you already do. So when we accept students via school choice, we're responsible in, for, for them until they graduate. Or if they weren't on a diploma, um, granting track, um, that could be longer than age eighteen. And we could have them till their age twenty two. We are obligated to educate all of them through graduation. And when we place a student out of district who is on school choice, the sending the res, district of residence for that student reimburses us for tuition and transportation. Again, get it, move my spear on that. Yeah, we get it on June third. Spend it, but yes, but we do get it, we do get that. So we are not funding out of district placements for school choice students. We do get, and we do have some out of district, um, and we do get reimbursed, just to be clear about that. I wanted to talk a little bit about specialized programs and cost avoidance. Um, I've mentioned them along the way, so I'll just say a little bit more specif, give you a few more specifics. So, um, we like to get a sense of, we have these specialized in district programs to help stabilize our, our budget, to, um, meet the needs of students in districts. So they're in their local schools as opposed to getting on a vehicle and going, you know, sometimes very long distances for out of district placements. So we'd like to, when I get these presentations, look at how much money are we saving by doing this? Um, so we look at, um, the salaries, the benefits, the tuition revenue, um, for the in district programs. Because the tuition revenue, of course, defrays some of those costs. And then we look at the cost of out of district programs, the tuition, the transportation. And of course, we do get some circuit breaker funding, um, and we figure out the net cost, so we can get into that. Um, here are the in district programs for FY twenty six. Um, I've mentioned all of the programs that we have previously. Um, and you can see, I mean, RISE is a small program, small but growing program. Um, and, um, that has just kind of got started. Um, the other programs have many, many more students in them from, um, grades K through twelve. So it's a total of seventy three students who are in our in district specialized programs. And here's an example, um, of cost avoidance and how we would calculate it. So, um, we have a classroom with a teacher and four teaching assistants. And there are four students in that classroom, it's a severe special needs classroom or. It's a severe special needs classroom or complex needs. Um, students needing intensive individualized instruction. And we look at where would those students be if they weren't here? Well, here's a few possibilities. Hopeful Journeys, Melmar, Kevin O'Brady, uh, which is a collaborative program and a Choco Learning Group. We look at those programs. And basically what I did was, my calculation was I took an average. What's the average cost of one of those programs? Um, or all of those programs together, what's the average? And I look at, and what would the average transportation be? I made that calculation. I took those averages. I multiplied them times four. You get nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the difference between a teacher and four teaching assistants for three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars and the out of district cost is five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So great savings. You also have to look at, oh, but we would get circuit breaker and that would be three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So that takes the savings to about half. But nevertheless, you are saving about two hundred thousand dollars. So on that. So you can see that you can have a lot of savings. Um, if we had all of our students and they went out of district, um, you would have a total savings before circuit breaker um, of five million dollars. And the estimated reimbursement would be around a little over two million dollars. So again, saving two point five million dollars in out of district cost avoidance.
Can you say that again louder for people in the back?
So you would be saving about, about two point five million in cost avoidance with all these programs. And almost every year, we'll have a student that they otherwise would be going out of district. And sometimes students move in unexpectedly. Um, and often we're able to have a program for them instead of immediately having this unexpected increase in our budget. So it has, it's been very, very successful in avoiding costs. And not just that, our programs are fantastic. Parents are extremely happy with them and the students are making progress and doing very, very well. So yes, we're saving a lot of money. But part of the reason we save money is because people are opting into our programs. They want our programs and they're not, and they would rather have their children here, which, um, and parents support for our programs is very helpful, that we can have those programs. And, um, we're placing those students, we're saving a lot of money and parents are choosing and opting for those programs because they're strong.
And I've also heard from parents just speaking on, um, I don't personally have this experience, so I want to bring this voice in, which is, um, students who get to stay in district in their community, not, not have to ride in transportation for an, over an hour by, to have their buddies be down the street at the park, go down the street to go to school, see the buddy that's in the park. That, that's priceless in certain ways. Yes. I know it's late, but I think that's.
Yes, I'm glad, I'm glad you're saying that. It's really, it's about a lot more than money, um, keeping children in these programs. So, um, yeah, the social life for children who are in out of district programs, it can be really challenging because their peer, they're not as in touch with their peers here. And then, um, they have peers who live in many different communities. So I have had parents say, that's really hard. Um, and it is. So it's very, it's very taken care of. Yes, absolutely, it can be very hard. Um, they're entitled to participate in our extracurricular activities, but sometimes by the time they get back, it can be, and that can be hard. So just a summary of out of district and just some of the factors, um, the cost variability factors um, with our, um, in district, um, programs. I mean, it's fair to acknowledge that our enrollment fluctuates. So you might be saving more some years than others. Um, they're nevertheless are cost effective, but that's just fluctuate from year to year. Um, and in order for, even if we have a few students who opted out of a program and ended up in and out of district program, um, we must maintain them for the students remaining in district. That doesn't happen enough to really be a big concern. But it does sometimes happen in other districts because if you don't have extremely high quality programs, you can end up with students out of district and in your in district program. And then you're paying, you know, substantially for both. And that really isn't a big factor for us at all. Because again, people are, parents are opting in and kids are opting in. Um, in terms of the out of district versus the in district, um, some of the things we face are the unpredictability of the tuition. It's determined by the office, the operational services division. We don't get to choose, which like you said earlier. Um, there's restructuring that sometimes tuitions can go up by quite a bit because of that. Um, the transportation has been incredibly volatile. Um, that's it. And a lot of it, what drives that volatility is the personnel shortages. Um, and with transportation, we also don't have control over when a student needs to out of district and the team determines that and we do not have a in district program for them. Um, they maybe go into a school other students are going to, they might not. You can't always pair, like have shared runs for students. Sometimes it's a new run and it's a solo run. And so there's just lots, lots of factors that go into those transportation expenses. Um, and then circuit breaker can also be a wild card because the threshold changes every year and the percent reimbursement by the C H as well. So bottom line, in district programs are more cost effective and there's actually, there are actually less wild cards or less disparity factors than the out of district placements.
Sorry, I just wanted to highlight one other thing you said, which is that if we had quality, if we had programs that families opted out of and were, were able to show, like some, some families will file a lawsuit if they feel that their child's needs aren't being met in the classroom. So like, that's, and, and then, and then we have these prepared programs and also the tuition for the programs that the families sought for in the lawsuit and also probably paid for the lawsuit, right? So.
Yes, yes.
It's, it's like exponentially, the savings, the, the costs could be exponential but for these really high quality, thoughtful, low cost, relatively low cost, um, programs. So.
Yes, thank you for making that addition. The legal costs around disputes can be very, very high, especially if you go to a hearing, but even if you don't. And, um, our legal costs are, they're, they've been very well managed because again, people are enjoying our programs.
And not that parents shouldn't take that path if they feel their child's or needs aren't being met, but I think that speaks volumes, what you just shared.
Yeah, the legal costs, I didn't even mention that, but that's a big factor as well. All right. And then I wanted to.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Five or, yeah.
Good.
Don't know. It's so loud.
Fantastic.
It's gonna be five, but maybe.
And you were first in the slide, I'm impressed. So there's something. Yes.
Yes, I moved it here.
Just a little bit, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was like.
We know when we load our concentrate, try to get us back, yeah.
Going, you know, but.
It doesn't just not come from that, that was.
It's very tough.
Be certain. You know, the age really, but it was much harder for the young, like what about the.
It's better trying to say we're, we're bad not to say.
Yeah, we are. Turn it over, back on.
Okay.
Now they're all being beat, no, I didn't.
No, it's, you can hear.
I'm still right. Scare them.
All right, I'm waiting for the.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just sneaking, sneaking, sneaking.
You're really loud, I think, my, oops.
I can hear you.
There we go. Yeah.
It worked. You were saying.
Do you want to start over or just where I left off? From, from very beginning.
This slide, well, I think kind of just recap the cost of long-term placement and.
Okay.
All right, so you can use it to do this, let me recap.
Okay, let me recap this slide. So this slide was designed to show the cost of a placement over time. Um, in this scenario, we have a student with complex needs. Um, the student is, um, the team determines in second grade that the student requires an out of district placement. Um, that placement accepts the student and, um, it's determined the student to be successful in that program, needs a one-on-one teaching assistant. The district provides transportation and the student remains in the placement until they turn twenty-two. They're not a student who learns a diploma. Um, we estimate an annual cost increase of four point five percent, which is very conservative after previous discussion. And, um, the cost over time, and there's the calculation on the right-hand side of the screen, and the total from grade two through the completion of the program for one student whose placement started at a cost of two hundred and thirty-one thousand. Um, it's a five point two million dollar placement for that student over the course of their time out of district. So, um, it's just another point about there are students who need to be in out of district placements and that is really okay. But it's another reason why if we can provide high quality programming in district for students, it's another reason for us to do that. Because typically when students go out of district, they don't return to district. Not never, but typically they do not. We need to think it's not just the cost for one year, it's the cost for that student over the course of their, um, time in special education with us.
How often do you revisit that decision for any case like this?
Every year. Yeah, we do. We have a meeting annually and we talk about, you know, is it the right placement? What is the student need? So we do, but the reality is that a student who has severe complex needs, um, the ongoing decision is, we bet that, yeah, standard.
I think that's why the choice to start with the process by which someone becomes eligible has a placement designated is not any one person or administrator's decision. And there is no variable in there about cost or efficiency. It's really all about the student need. So it's always important to keep in mind that we can control quality of program and offering here, but we can't control decision-making. Process, that's weird.
So what are our next steps? This is my final slide, just of where we are. Um, some things that I'm thinking a lot about right now and my department's thinking a lot about is we have the Essex Building Project that we're involved in. What are their needs? What are the needs of students with disabilities? We're looking at distributing the preschool across the district because it's currently at Memorial. Um, and we're looking at distributing the programs because most of the programs are at Memorial right now. The RISE program, because of the lack of disability access in the Essex Building, had to move to Memorial. Um, when we were starting that program, um, there were ramps that are not up to code and other issues that were safety issues for somebody who lived here that were not fixable. Um, and so we're looking at returning that program. The ACE program's already there and, um, and again, the preschool. Something else we're thinking about that I've mentioned along the way in this presentation is strengthening tier one instructions. Strengthening tier one instruction helps everyone, students who might need special education, students who are in special education, all students would be helped by strengthening tier one instruction. Um, we're working on our pre-referral decision-making process. And, and that, a lot of that has to do with we are developing a robust MTSS program. At what point might a student be referred to special education versus remaining in MTSS for longer? Um, we will continue to implement specially designed instruction to both skill gaps, whether it's our moderate students, students in inclusion, or students in specialized programs. Um, and for the specialized programs, we want to maintain the high quality in district programs. It is, um, the right thing to do for students and also for the community, also in terms of fiscal responsibility, been very effective for us. We've, I've showed you how that works financially tonight. Um, and we, something I'm thinking about for FY twenty-seven is this RISE program where we have more students with very high needs coming in, in preschool. Right now, those student, we created the program and we have, those students are in K through two. We have more students coming through. So we will need to expand that program as the students age. Um, and looking to do that, um, and at some point, we'll need to add a second teacher so that we're meeting a continuum of needs, K through five for that program as the students progress through the grade levels. So that's something I'm thinking about for the future. Um, and these are students who are better served in district. And, um, if they're a fit for that program and the co-board and they, um, it is much more costly to, to add a teacher than to even send one student out of district. And it would be meant more to my, so that's, that's where we are. So that is, that is my presentation and I'm happy to take, I think that's.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well done.
Thanks.
Can you speak to, um, how in district, we, I think, talked a lot about students and how in district programs can benefit students? What about how in district programs can benefit teachers in teaching? And how, and teaching practices and universal design, the learning and how the teachers can kind of collaborate, work together across different programs or, you know, helping different students, different student profiles?
That's such a good question. And I mean, you've, you've stated some of the advantages right there. But, um, actually, I can just give a few anecdotes. So having these, um, students in districts who have more significant needs in a particular area, whether it's dyslexia, whether it's behavior and emotional regulation, um, whether it's more complex needs. It has been very advantageous, in particular, for the teachers in the building where those, um, programs reside. Um, having this, I'll just give an example. So the SAIL program, for example, is a program for students who struggle with emotional behavior, um, regulation. They have behavioral needs. And the, because those, that's actually, um, a program that has a lot of inclusion and there are needs for a lot of consultation with the teachers who are working with the students in that program. And as a result, it's increased the comfort level of the teachers in working with students with challenges with emotional regulation and behaviors, um, that are more significant. Um, and so there's a big benefit just to have colleagues who can, um, model that for you um, as a teacher. So that's been helpful in terms of universal design for learning. We also have teachers with the expertise in special education. Um, some in moderate, but also some of the specialized programs who can consult to teachers based on their area of expertise. So we also have that happening. Um, so it definitely is beneficial to just have that shared expertise in terms of all the expertise is happening out of district. Like it's also happening here, um, and people are sharing their expertise. Particularly, I have noticed that because we're seeing more children, young children and children as they progress, having behavioral needs. And that has been a trend for the last like fifteen years or so. Um, it's been extremely helpful to have teachers in the district with some of these specialized programs who are board certified behavior analysts. And so they're working with the children in their program, but they also can like do a functional behavioral assessment for a student who's maybe in an inclusion classroom and do some consultation and help everyone understand what strategies would be helpful. So they're, we, we solve, and I'm not just.
Amazing. I'm really happy to do. Thank you.
Sure. Other questions?
I can repeat my question more. I can repeat my question more. Are you seeing an impact from the COVID pandemic?
So, yeah, we're seeing a couple of different types of impact. One is on the students themselves because there were pockets where they missed socialization. They missed development of keys of, to the same degree as they would have, you know, if the pandemic hadn't happened. Um, we see, we're seeing for a while, and I think to some degree, um, still do, but kind of lag in the maturity, like the social maturity of students and, um, are still seeing pockets where, based on what age children were in during the pandemic, like we're seeing some behavioral self-regulation, just some life around that. Um, and also the, right after the pandemic, there were definitely students who had so much distress that, um, they under other circumstances may not have required special education, but they did. Like took the scales for them in terms of needing, not making effective progress, needing specially-designed instruction. These were students who there may, there was a disability, there was a diagnosis that might have been like more mental health oriented. It might have been ADHD, um, under other circumstances. They could have, a few accommodations and they would have been fine, but they ended up needing more. So that definitely has happened as well. And in terms of finance, um, there were staffing shortages and, um, that have driven up the cost of out-of-district placements and transportation. So all of those, I don't.
Thank you. Sure. Teresa.
Really get the chance to do this every couple of years. I have to say this is one of my top three presentations I've had since being on.
Thank you.
Really impressed and, um, we're very lucky to have had that and to have it recorded because I think it's a resource that can use for, um, a long time. So thank you. I want to, I want to make sure that I'm understanding something that you presented in, in one of these slides. Because I've put it together here on the, on one of the slides, um, talking about the in-district. Actually, I was going to, you know, see which side.
Yeah.
It is revenue from tuition students FY6, FY6. So it wasn't just that, but that's where, where this thought started. One thing that has, um, been kind of logged sort of repeatedly and I feel like asked and answered, but I think it can really be clarified here straight through. Is that, um, when we accept tuition students in, that it could either be a drain on our resources financially or not, um, or take the spot of someone who, who natively in district. Isn't that the only phrase I know to use is natively in district?
Okay.
Um, could otherwise use that scene, but the way you've presented this, it sounds like natively in district acceptance into special ed programming, relevant of an IP and, and especially in like a separate program, SAIL or ACE and like that is based not on availability of spots. It is based on student need.
Yes.
And that.
And profile.
And profile.
Specific profile they have to, you know, the actual line.
Additionally, tuition students who are not natively in district who come to us. The tuition is determined, am I hearing this part right? That you determine the tuition working together based on what the staffing, the staffing levels that are going to be required.
Yes.
So if that's the case, it's not possible that they are a drain because you're setting their tuition based on
Right.
what it's going to cost. Am I, I just want to make sure I'm hearing that right.
Not only is it not a drain, it helps to defray the cost of the program.
Yes.
So that tuition is contributing to a portion of the teacher cost.
Yes.
And if the student has a TA, it's, you know, we're paying for their TA, for their tuition, and then a percentage of the teacher
Yep.
that would not otherwise be paid for by tuition. So it defrays the cost.
So it is not the case then that inclusion of students not native to our district in our, or acceptance of students on a district, in the program, but even by tuition is not a financial drain, but in fact, it's the opposite. And it is not taking spaces that would otherwise be reserved for our students and, and not allowing natively in district students to get what they need.
That is correct. And in addition to that, just in terms of my thinking around it. So say I, I mean, it's one of the reasons lately I haven't taken any tuition students in the Earl program because that program is very popular. There's, um, a lot of, you know, we tend to have candidates for it. And unless we were low on numbers in a particular year by a few students, like I would never give away the last slot. I usually try to keep a couple open because what if someone new moves into the district and needs it? Or we discover that a student that is already here needs it. So we, we would not ever cut it that close. Um, with the ACE program, um, yeah, we had room and it was better for the students in ACE to be part of a cohort and have more social opportunities with other students. So that has, um, yeah, and it just has some.
But can I ask a clarifying question to build on yours? The process that you are talking about is students specifically who are tuitioning into our in-district programs. But the process is different for school choice students who end up here and are then identified as needing to be in a separate setting.
Yep.
Could you go into what that process looks like and how we are reimbursed for that?
I'm just going to say we should consider them native. Because once they, once they're school choice, they're on the book.
And like the student, the budget and who is covering those costs is not native.
And that is part of the school choice conversation.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah. So just like, so we can bill them all our services for the great level of service provided.
We can. There is a formula and there's some reimbursement.
Those students do sometimes end up in our sub-separate.
In their sub-separate program.
I'm, I'm going to say.
There's only been, I mean, collective hour, they're a part of our district.
I know. I am not saying what you asked the question was, sometimes the way that question is asked implies that the students aren't part of our district. But once we accept them as school choice, they're an interesting student, so.
Right, and they are also not draining our special education budget because their sending district is reimbursing for those costs.
Correct.
If one of those students is identified for, say, the Earl program, is the sending district paying our tuition cost? Or are they, if we were to accept stu-, so do you know what I'm saying?
Oh, I do.
If we were to accept students.
I do, yeah.
Tuition.
A very.
So then are we.
Very savvy question and I really appreciate it. So, um, all right, first of all, there's a school choice formula that we use to determine what we're reimbursed for, um, school choice students in special education. And then, like you said, there's, if somebody's tuitioned in, it's, we, we get to determine exactly what they're paying for. We do, whereas we don't have the same control over it with school choice. Sometimes the school choice increment, depending on the situation, can be more generous than you would expect. And it just kind of varies on a lot of different factors. Um, one of the factors largely being like how much teacher time is, that's a factor you get much higher reimbursement for. Or if you have like some one-on-one time, it's like things like that. Um, so it's, it's very individually driven, but it is two separate things. I have had scenarios and I will, I will say this openly because I don't think anyone, I don't want any parent to do this. Okay. Um, a parent should not move here, um, or not, a parent who moved, not move here. A, a parent should.
Should move here.
A parent should move here. A parent should move here. A parent should not get, try to get an on-school choice with the goal of getting their child into a specialized program. Because you don't know if there's room, you don't know if your child is a fit for it. Um, and there have been cases where, um, the student came in on school choice, um, they had an IP for similar to one of our programs, but I didn't have space. And so we do get reimbursed if that student is then placed elsewhere. Um, so it's not, it, it, um, it's not wise to take that approach. I think like the two, if somebody really wanted their child to come here on, from another district, the tuition is more of a sure thing, um, than saying, well, maybe if I go in on school choice, I'll be able to get into one of those specialized programs. You know, parents, I would like parents not to do that because it could be really disappointing.
Right.
Um, and husband, you know, so that's why I'm, I'm saying that here, um, in, in their best interest. Um, but, and then, you know, so, you know, if people move here, we work with it, we work with it. Um, and we do with school choice too, but occasionally that being the goal just has, you know, we can't guarantee, always guarantee we're going to other space. Like we're working with the students that we have. And we do always, I always try to leave a little space in case like, what if somebody moves in, um, over the summer? Because that has happened a lot of times. So. Wait, I still have a question.
Sorry.
You hijacked my question.
I just have a quick one, actually. Well, I hope. Um, federal money, what's at risk if things go south with federal money? How much of your budget is impacted?
Four fifty, right? Maybe it's a, four hundred fifty thousand.
Four fifty, okay. So is that something that you're just actively just keeping an eye on, you have back plans that you don't ever want to pull out or?
Um, I would say that the first, if we had a mid-year reduction, we would have to cover reserves. That was actually in my notes. I think what we're learning is this year the money is allocated. So theoretically, it should be fine. I think we're in the who knows portion of the world. Um, but FY27, yeah, could be the greater impact that there is now. So just have an eye full of it and look at our local resources and hope, and, you know, hope the state has some backup.
Thank you.
So I have, uh, one third age question and then maybe one question that might be a little beyond this conversation actually. But so clarification question, just looking at the numbers. I guess it gets to how we define inclusion. Because the numbers you started with in terms of, you know, the 231, uh, distributed across full inclusion, partial inclusion, substantially separate and out-of-district. The partial inclusion and substantially separate, those percentages you gave equal about 55 students. But we have, you said 73 in the in-district programs.
I can answer that question.
That'd be great. That's the question.
So our industry programs aren't all self-employed, at least not. So my physical program is a full inclusion program.
That's, that's, that's helpful.
The students in there.
Yep.
So I think even just without the amount.
It's about 20 students.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all right, that, that helps. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, my second question goes to an earlier conversation, I think we had last year when we were looking at AP data and MCAS data and, and students with disabilities performance and participation in those. Um, and I know you're looking at, you said you're looking at, um, how many students are transitioning out of special education. But we had had a conversation then about, you know, uh, metrics of success in terms of students with disabilities, whether they're currently in the program or had transitioned out of it, um, compared to their general population peers. Have you had more thought about that or is that a separate conversation about kind of performance and, and achievement, uh, that we should have later?
The conversation, let me make sure I'm understanding your question. So the conversation that we had was around performance of students with disabilities on DA and PAS.
And, and their participation in like AP and other metrics of what we would consider metrics of success.
Right. So the conversation that we had, I believe, was that, um, we have a lot of students that exit special education and their scores tend to be lower before they exit special education. But many of them do exit special education and go on to take honors and AP courses. So I, so if we're talking about performance and we're looking just at scores of students when they're in special education, that typically is, that isn't their time of highest performance, but they can exit. If, if your performance is really high, well, it's time to exit. And they do. And so.
So that's my question, have you done more looking into that? And.
What do you mean?
I have not. What more would you want to know about it? We, I mean, we did look at who was taking, you know, the outcomes for those students. It is something I'm continuing to look at.
So I'll just take a very particular example of AP participation.
Yeah.
Right, when we looked at those AP numbers last year, there was one student, special education student participating in the AP.
Yeah.
And your point at the time was, well, you know, many students exit and may still participate. And now, and that was something that we, we talked about looking into to find out, you know, are those students who had been or are students with disability, are they now performing equivalent to their peer group?
Once they're.
Once they're out.
Special education. I think it's something that we can monitor and look at that data every single year to see how is that continuing to play out. I think that's really important. I just, after doing this, I was motivated to start pulling data, which I am in the process of pulling for who over the last three years who's exited special education and kind of look at where they are now. So it's just an ongoing.
And something you're still looking at.
It's something I'm still looking into and.
And I, I appreciate you looking into it.
It's my next, it's my next project.
Yeah, that's great.
I'm actually to look at like where they are because I know it looked at it one year for you, but we should keep looking at it.
Can I use?
Because that's, that's the metric of success for some students in the special education. There are some students in special education that will be with us the whole time because of their level of disability. But particularly for the students who have specific learning disabilities, I want to see that students are closing the gap and they're moving on and they're taking more challenging courses over time. So I def, that's definitely something I want to keep.
Great, thanks.
Yes.
Do you think that, and I, I mean, maybe this is an unfair question because the range of abilities and the students who are identified as needing an IP is so large. But is, is it a fair or relevant metric to use, say, AP courses to measure success? And I guess it goes back to our greater conversation about what success is. But I would assume that if a student started with a specific learning disability and struggled to gain some of those foundational skills, that even though they might be closing the gap, I don't know that it would be fair to use the average of their peers as where they could or should be. I don't know if it would, I don't know.
Is that a? Maybe it's more to look like, like we look at post-high school. Like it's kind of what, what have, where do they go? What's the path? It's, you know, um, is it CP classes, is it honor classes, is it CP classes? Is it? High-level performing, I mean, it's going to be different for every kid every year, but you can get a sense of kind of what, where they go.
I think there's a lot of metrics of success, like are they exiting? Are they, um, once they exit, what are their grades? Are they taking honors? Are they taking AP or are they taking CP and doing really well? They're finding areas they're very, very interested in. Um, obviously our college, um, percent going on to college is very, very high. Um, but we could be more specific about that than saying it's very. Um, but I, anecdotally, I'm like, um, hearing from the special liaisons all the time about this student got into this college and that college and just getting a sense of their success um, in moving to post-secondary. So I agree, I think it should be a lot of different metrics of success.
And I think there's a task here, Jake, that was struggling to articulate, but that students who struggle early in a particular subject area, my own child specifically, doesn't not enjoy that subject area. Even now, that his performance is much more on par with his peers because of that sort of hard, it was harder for him to acquire those skills. And I would be, I would think he would be less. And I would be, I would think he would be less likely to pursue much higher coursework in that area because of that rougher stuff. It's just another factor.
I, I hear you. I just don't want us as adults in the system to assume that because kids are starting that way, that they will not perform like their peers. So I think this is an important conversation. We don't have the answer, obviously, based on this conversation, but it's the one that I want to keep going.
Assumption.
That, if that's the kind of assumptions we're making for these students and that, then yes, that is, that would be the way that it's, it's being institutionalized, which I do not want it to be, and I don't think it is. I just want us to be careful that it's not the assumptions we're making.
I, um, yeah, that I, I don't see that at the high school and I, I'm not sure that high school teachers always know that somebody was once in special education to even make that kind of judgment because we do have a lot of students exit. So, um, anyway, I'm really interested in looking at the numbers too, and we definitely could do some more. I, I think annually, it would be great to be like, who exited? Um, you know, where are they now? We talked about, we had a meeting in our Intensive Reading and Language Program with the um, middle school. Got some information from the high school, the elementary school, like where are they now? Because they had had these students and the elementary teachers had worked with these students. And many of them are now in high school, um, and are moving through high school and what's going on for them so that those teachers could see how far the students have come. So we've done things like that with each other internally, um, and I think it's very important. I, um, there are other, a measure of success for some of our special ed students is that they exit and they, you know, they're going on and being successful in high school. And we have students who stay in special education who are also successful in high school, I might add. But I do think that's really interesting data.
I think success also looks like teaching a student who might, might not exit ever and carry an IEP into college. What that IEP means for them, empower them to advocate for themselves and what their rights are and, and how to, how to implement that even beyond, like that, that's also, that's also success.
I agree with you because what we're teaching the students, especially at the high school level when we're getting them ready to move on, is at, and all the way along to know their learning styles, strengths and weaknesses, where do I need to self-advocate? How would I describe my own profile?
Yes.
Um, and what, and, and in the high school, they spent, students spent a lot of time looking at their goals and talking about what they need um, being able to, and working on describing that to their teachers. And some of them will take that um, beyond high school. And um, some of them will have less of a need to do so, but it's all um, what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you very much, Allison.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Do you want to, there's a title on the budget for, there's a title on the agenda for.
With the calendar, don't you go on. I think we're good. Till next meeting. It's the standard, sorry, it's the standard calendar we went over and confined meeting. I, I don't, I would ask you to just look at it, go look at it, and I don't even know if it's in your pocket. I would send it to you and take a look at it, let me know what we can think is, I guess. But it's just the standard layout. Which will be new, but it's in India, but if I can. Is that enough sufficient or do you, if I can get into it.
Sounds great.
Um, is there any additional smooth media follow?
I have the tiniest question, but it doesn't have to be answered. I just, I'm interested in knowing because it's come up in conversations. Is anyone planning to go, is anyone here registering and going? You are going.
What are you hoping up?
The MASC.
It's a. Thanks. I'm sorry. I'm interested. I'm not.
Yeah.
Thank you for going.
I am going as an individual, though I am not going as representative of, so unless you all want me to, and, and.
What are you gonna say?
Well, there's a whole part of the agenda that is, that is like voting on resolutions and stuff that I will not participate in because I can't be speaking for us. Right? We haven't taken stand on those resolutions, for example.
I don't think. Nobody's even gone. We just get a sense of what you think of it.
Yeah.
It's worth the time.
Yeah.
We can always, people, groups go in different ways. They go as full groups. Um, sometimes, I mean, typically a superintendent will go, is there a whole group going? If you're going, you kind of lay the land.
Yeah.
You don't mind doing that, seeing if it's more, maybe a bigger um, lesson of time to do pictures.
And I'm going in part because of our conversation around what do we use advocacy as a group, right? As a global or as a state, this is an opportunity potentially to advocate at that larger level, right? So I won't be doing that on behalf of the school committee now, but I can find out if it's worth taking that role on.
You can first talk about it in spring so we can all plan that if you want it.
Yeah.
That's a large ability issue. And I do day on hill. So if anyone wants to do the same kind of thing, I go as an individual.
Right.
Speaking for the committee, but it's the same, same idea, but it's only one day and it's nearby, so.
Yeah, this is a commitment.
Yeah, well, that's why I haven't done it, and that's why I wanted to know if someone else was excited.
People will go for one day and then they'll just for special session, so they don't have to feel committed the whole time.
You're driving to Hyannis.
You are.
I've voted more than one person.
They're gonna vote. It's a leftover of a mystery, you know? It's, it's. That's fair. That's not directly what I. But thank you for.
Okay, we'll make a motion to adjourn. Second, all is in fact. Thank you, everyone.